We're on. I'd like to open this meeting of the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board for October 2013. First order of business, confirmation of the meeting agenda. I believe it stands as written, as printed?
No, not correct.
No? Uh-oh.
The agenda as posted did not include, as a 640 item, the public hearing, the continuation of public hearing on Ryan.
It did not? Okay.
So the...
640.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other than that, I believe the... So that's really a correction. That's a correction to the posted agenda as previously... And that was previously arranged.
Right. We have three public hearings. Okay. Could I hear a motion to accept the planning consultant's meeting notes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Very good.
Just for clarification, to make sure everybody's got everything in hand, there was a set of meeting notes issued. There was a first supplement that dealt with the Grassmere situation. And then there was a second supplement that dealt with a couple of issues that arose because of problems with computer communications out of this building. So there was a... So there are actually two supplements.
Okay. And I believe the meeting minutes we have are September 21st, 2013, have been circulated? Lee?
No. The only... The only set of minutes I believe you have are the special... Yeah, September 21st?
2013.
And the special meeting minutes of September 17th.
Okay.
Right, Joan?
Yes, I don't have my glasses on. I guess so. Have you had a chance to read those minutes?
Hold it. It's gotta be September 16th on the regular meeting.
Right, 16th.
16th.
Are we talking about the regular planning board?
Right, September 16th.
Not the special meeting.
No.
Right. And those were circulated. Have you ever had a chance to read them for the 16th, a regular meeting? Very much a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Amendments or anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. I think you all received an update from Joni, the Dutchess County Planning Federation. A secret presentation is being done out in Millbrook on October 24th. It's about the new seeker forms, some of the new... I don't know that they really changed the process or anything like that. It's just the forms, how they expect you to use the forms, when they expect you to use the different forms, things like that. And I think Joni has the details on it if you would like to sign up. It's out in Millbrook.
Oh, hold it. I'll give you some information on that. If you haven't signed up, if you didn't sign up within three days of the receipt of that notice, you're closed out from that particular session. It was totally subscribed within three days. And in fact, on behalf of... I'm going to be attending, and on behalf of one of my other clients, I've agreed to do essentially a redo of what that... of what is presented at that session. I'm going to do a redo on behalf of another community on November 20th. I'm not the presenter at the Federation, but I will replicate their presentation on the 20th for another client. I'm willing to do that, obviously, for you folks, too. If we have time, maybe I'll just give you a little bit of the highlights at the meeting on the 18th of November.
Can we get that...
It's important because the new seeker forms are in effect. And any application that was received, or is received after the 1st of October, has to use the new short and new long EAF forms.
Can we get credits toward the required number of...
You gotta go to one of the accredited...
Yeah, you have to go to one of the credited.
When they put it out, so I got a spot.
You got a spot, that's good.
But you can ask...
Yeah, but it was an immediate... It was an immediate closeout.
Yeah, good. The town could do that. You could ask the town to accredit it.
Right.
I think that would be very valuable for the town board and the whole planning board.
Planning board, ZBA.
Helpful.
No, for you. When you come back and present...
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying, all bodies that are subject to seeker need to be informed about the new... not only the new forms, but the considerations that the boards need to go through are much more rigorous than they've been in the... Much more structured than they have been in the past.
And a reminder, the continuation of the joint public hearing with the village planning board on the Thomas Thompson Sally Masarella Park is tomorrow, 7:30 at Village Hall. Okay. Ooh, timing is good here. Our first public hearing tonight, Core Group Properties LLC, Middle Road, special use permit and site plan approval, public hearing on applications for special use permit pursuant to Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, section 12520 and 12568 triple E, and site plan approval in the matter of the establishment of a special event venue on parcel in the Office Research Park District being an unlisted action under seeker. Take it away.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dan Wheeler, DF Wheeler Engineers. I'm here representing the core group for, I think, 42 Pitcher Lane. And the proposal is to change the flower shop as an additional use to a kind of small convention center for weddings and things like that. Pitcher Lane, 42, it's what used to be called the old, and I'm gonna screw this up, Anemone, okay, farm. And so, that's pretty much it. I mean, well, let's talk about what we're doing. The barn, the barn is already in place. This is a map... Sorry. This is a map of it right here. We've kind of come into the... There's three rental, four rental properties on the site. And the main house, there's... The barn has been converted. And we propose a new septic field in here, additional parking. It's called overflow parking in this area. The tent area is really a temporary site, hence the temporary structures. And, oh, 75 people, I think, is about the limit. And I guess that's about it. Whoops, sorry. I guess that's about it.
Okay. We have certification, compliance with the noticing. I think we got that at the last meeting, in terms of publication. We have... Let me see. A report from... Is anyone here from the CAB? Okay. Jeff was talking to me at a little site visit we had today, and he said that they felt the only concerns they had is that there is potential for amphibian migration between the wetlands and whatnot and pond on your property. They just wanted these people to be informed about that so that certain times of year you might want to know you're gonna have things crawling around that you don't want to step on, so to speak. And we do have review from the planning board engineer. Dan, have you seen the planning?
Yes.
Okay, you have seen that.
Yes.
Okay. He had a few comments. There's nothing in there that I don't believe we can put in as a condition of final stamping and signing. I don't think there's any stops there. Yes?
We still are pending before the Health Department.
Right. And that's okay.
Okay. I just wanted you to know that, yeah.
The referral from Dutchess County, local concern. We received no comment back from the Town of Red Hook. And I think Jesse and Bob did the site visit. If you guys want to report?
Yeah, I think the use is, you know, very appropriate for the space. I mean, there's plenty of parking. The building is in great shape. They did a fantastic job of, you know, converting the building, so I see no problem with it.
I agree.
One thing I did notice on the plan that I saw, you still had the porta potties listed?
Yes. In fact, Mr. Cherkowski pointed that out.
Okay.
He pointed out two things. One, the porta potties are still on there, and one of our regraded contour lines comes over the street. And quite honestly, those are... The porta potties are on there because we left that layer on. That was a drafting error. And we can push the regrading for the septic systems to keep it off of the... It's really kind of a busted-up asphalt lane there, but we can still take care of that well within...
Questions from members of the board? Questions, comments from the public? Ooh. Hearing none. I have a draft resolution, seeker resolution, which I think I might as well read right now.
Yeah. If you're gonna close the public hearing, you have to.
Yep. Okay. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts within uncoordinated environmental quality review as follows in the matter of proposed action involving applications to the planning board by Core Group Properties LLC for special use permit pursuant to Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, sections 12520 and 12568 triple E, and site plan review and approval pursuant to section 12573 therein in the matter of proposed special event venue in the Office Research Park District. All is depicted on three site plan drawings, site plan cover sheet CS1 dated August 2nd, 2013, site plan prepared for the greenhouse at Rhinebeck dated January 17th, 2012, and marked P1 of 3, and proposed site plan P2 dated August 2nd, 2013, all is prepared by DF Wheeler Engineers and otherwise described in supporting data, including a project narrative, a full environmental assessment form, part 1, certified by Daniel F. Wheeler, and dated August 23rd, 2013, an agricultural data statement, and both an application to the Dutchess County Health Department for approvals of plans for a wastewater disposal system submitted on September 16th, 2013, and an application to the New York State Department of Health of approval of plans for public water supply improvement submitted on October 8th, 2013, each by DF Wheeler Engineers. One, determines upon review of the above cited EAF part 1 and its own completion of EAF part 2, in consideration of the criteria for determining significance set forth at Title VI, Part 617.7(c) NYCRR, including potential effect on neighboring properties, the proposed action as described in the application and being an unlisted action will cause no potential significant adverse impact on the environment and thus issue a negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance, giving an environmental impact statement to not be required and stating such will not be prepared. Two, authorizes the chairman to so execute the first page of the full EAF and directs the planning board clerk to distribute and file without requirement for publication the annexed negative declaration in the manner set forth within seeker implementing regulations, Title VI, Part 617.12 NYCRR. And the next document will be the negative declaration itself. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And we will have a resolution of approval after we get done with our public hearings. Okay. Which brings us to a public hearing for Ryan. This is a... It's not on... This is the one that's not on your agenda. We forgot to put it there, but it is something we're doing tonight. It's basically two lots that were created, one which had no road frontage, and it's a minor subdivision to take portion of property from one property and give road frontage to this 10-acre property, which the applicants representative will now do a much better job of describing than I did.
I'm Kay Colmasar from the surveyor's office, working on this project. And I'd like to begin by thanking the board for fitting us into the agenda this evening. The decision on the final configuration on the small transfer parcel did not come into us until the middle of the day Friday, so our paperwork's middle was a bit tardy in this case, but you've all got copies to look at. I'm also going to pass out, to go down the line here, a letter from one of the neighbors speaking in support of this project, and you may want to just add those to your file on this project. If you recall, previously, the proposal was to come back along the existing property line 65 feet, swing out to Mill Road, give the 10-acre parcel 130 feet on Mill Road, and the transfer parcel at that point was a tenth of an acre. Discussion began about what this would do, or what it would force the purchaser of the 10-acre parcel to do in terms of a driveway, and in terms of the old large trees and the stone wall that are in the area. So our office went back to the job site, located the existing tractor path, which goes into the large 32-acre parcel, which is a cornfield at this time. In addition to the tractor path, we located a large number of these old stately trees that are in the area. And after several site visits, I believe at least one or two members from the board have been out to the property and the proposed purchasers for these two parcels. It was decided to change the configuration of the transfer to 60 feet along Mill Road, come back 130 feet along the common property line between the two, narrow the opening down to 40 feet at the back, and then just connect. And this would give them a nice opening between... Coming off of the tractor path and going between some of these large existing trees into the 10-acre parcel.
And I recall, the one question we had the last meeting was this access point. And I know that I went out there, I know Sharon went out there, and identified this point where the tractor path goes through, and you take that turn, and then you're onto the property, onto the building site. So that's basically what we were looking for. I realized both of these properties were under contract at the time, so there were certain dimensional requirements listed under the contracts, and I believe...
Mm-hmm.
I don't know whether the attorneys have somehow modified the contracts, or if this still fits under whatever the contract requirements were.
Based on my conversation with Michael Katz, who was the attorney for the Ryans on Friday, I think that they were still trying to keep the change between the original triangular parcel and the new rectangular parcel less than 50% increase. So we've gone from a tenth of an acre to .14, which satisfies that requirement...
Okay.
...for the parties involved.
Questions from members of the board? CBA?
There was a discussion here about you and Grassmere talking. Has that happened?
We haven't had a discussion with Grassmere directly with our office, no.
Okay. Because there was a discussion about the impact... Well, he's here.
Jonathan will have something to say about that.
I know the gentleman from Grassmere was concerned because of the proximity of these two driveways.
Yeah.
My understanding is that the Town Highway Superintendent has reviewed this and does not have a problem with the existing tractor path being improved and run off of to go into this 10-acre parcel. We have some letters of support from neighbors who have supported the use of this as a driveway. Now that we've located the tractor path, we see that they do come out onto Mill Road fairly close to each other, but there are pillars over here that the Grassmere driveway exits or enters through. And because it's a gravel driveway, I personally think that it would be fairly easy to make a small demarcation between the two of these, just possibly by changing the line of gravel and depending on where the purchaser in this parcel 1A puts his driveway to get a little separation between them.
Another issue was the necessary... The necessity for a variance in terms of the amount of frontage. And you're, I believe, here before the ZBA?
We will be going before the ZBA because we didn't have an exact answer on what the configuration would be until Friday. We haven't turned in our application on that yet.
Okay.
So I will be discussing that with them tomorrow morning and getting on the next possible agenda.
Okay. Because I think, obviously, we can't... Without... We can't approve it without that variance being in place.
Exactly.
Was there also a mention of signage to deter guests, I think, from next door?
I believe that the one next door will be having some signage, and I'm not sure what the purchaser on the 10-acre parcel intends. I doubt that they intend to have a sign. They may have a house number.
One of those private drive type of things. Right. Okay.
Okay. Other comments at the moment from members of the board? Jonathan, I know you want to...
Yeah, I haven't got it. It's gonna be in there.
Well, that's because we forgot to put it there.
Yeah, no, I know. And, you know, the concern... And we... I want to start off by saying we have no objection to the sort of nature of this use. We actually look forward to having Guy and Maya as neighbors. We very much support what's gonna be happening, the proposed agricultural use in the 30 acres. The concern we've had in looking at this, and it's frustrating because we have asked to act, to meet with these guys, and the answer's been, for whatever reason, they're not interested in that. But the concern that we've got is that our driveway directly intersects the proposed access point. And I did talk to Kathy Cancel about it, and what Kathy said is it's not a high-speed intersection. She does recognize it as being, you know, a potential conflict and an inconvenience. And the issue is that one drive directly intersects the other one, and there's cover in terms of trees and bushes and all that between the two. So you'd have two cars that would literally come to the exact same place if both were to do what they were to naturally do. Exiting the Grassmere Drive, you don't stop at the pillars. In order to get line of sight going down Mill Road, you have to go all the way out to Mill Road. And the point that you come to on Mill Road is the exact same point that intersects with that farm access road. My thought and suggestion, you know, for anyone to care, would be that the actual access point be up on Mill Road a little bit, and then it come back in and intersect and use that farm driveway, which I think would be great. The only thing that exists there right now is really the spot that Bernie Shuldorff drives his tractor in and out of. And from an historic standpoint, it's not an overly relevant situation. It's just a point that he saw as being pretty easy to get in and out of. And our only... Our concern is really that if this driveway is being sighted, it not be sighted in a spot that creates this clear conflict with the Grassmere driveway. I mean, there's options, right? It's not like it has to go there. So it should go if it's being sighted now, at least in my mind, in a spot where it wouldn't create that conflict with this driveway. And again, I say this not trying to oppose anything that's happening with the 10-acre parcel or the 30-acre parcel. It just seems that creating something that... A problem that doesn't need to exist seems pretty silly. So, and I think there probably is something going on with the contracts that I just don't understand. Again, we've asked to have this meeting and have been told there's not an interest in it. So I don't know exactly what that is or that isn't. But that's, you know, our position at the moment. And we'd welcome having more of a discussion around it if that's something that anybody on that side is open to.
It might be... But what we will be doing, we'll have more discussion tonight, but what we will be doing is continuing this public hearing until the ZBA can get before the ZBA, because clearly, without that variance, then you still don't have road frontage. I do have two letters here I'll read that pertain to this application. The first is from Martin and Catherine Beazer. I hope I got that right. Beazer? I didn't get it right. "To whom it may concern, my wife and I live at 24 Mill Road directly across from the proposed driveway. If anyone would be affected by the plans, it would be us. I have had the opportunity to talk with Mr. Lawson and Ms. Kamal about their intentions and have been impressed by the respect for the chaotic nature of Mill Road and the unobtrusive nature of their plans. We have no objections to the proposed driveway and look forward to having them as quiet neighbors. I should add, however, that I would loudly object to any proposal that would turn Mill Road into a heavily trafficked entrance to Grassmere. I am not privy to any planned development of that estate, but would hope that future access could be made to Grassmere from Route 9. Mill Road is a precious amenity to Rhinebeck as a country road, and this board should be... Should strive to maintain that quality." And the other letter I have is from Beverly Kane, October 21st. "I understand that the adjustment will give access to a landlocked parcel on the south side of Mill Road immediately to the east of the current Grassmere driveway. Assuming that the new driveway will essentially be the same as the current farm road, which comes in perpendicular to Mill Road, I see no problem. The Grassmere driveway is problematic because it runs parallel to Mill Road, and it is easy for drivers exiting the driveway to forget that they are actually merging into a major roadway. Frequently, they do not stop or even slow down, creating a hazard for anyone traveling east on Mill Road. This proposed driveway will be in front of drivers exiting Grassmere, so they should not have trouble seeing cars coming in or out of the driveway, as they can currently see farm equipment entering and exiting." And that's Beverly Kane. Any further questions from the board tonight? Any further comments from the public tonight? We will be continuing this public hearing.
No questions. Let me do what you want to say. I'm Gina Fox, and I'm the real estate agent for the Ryans for the two parcels. And Jonathan, I know that we haven't discussed this because, as Kay said, it came in Friday, and she's been working on it to present it to here. But we have had extensive discussion with you and your father via email and phone conversations. So we have had discussions. It's not like we're saying we're not having discussion. I just wanted to correct that. And secondly, my clients have worked really, really hard since June to make this happen. And the time factor is a concern as winter's coming, and they've worked on their BOHA. Jonathan has had, since August, time to raise any concerns that he's had. And at this point, it seems like it's just obstructionist to me. But I appreciate all the time and concern. I just wanted to address that, that we have been in contact and have had conversations. Okay. And plan on having more, if necessary.
So I'm Guy Lawson, and I'm the purchaser. My wife and I have the 10-acre lot. And I would say the following things ought to be considered, that we have a contract with the sellers, which has contingencies and a timeframe in order to get those contingencies taken care of. One of them is a variance for the access, which of course the town needs to do. Another is the Board of Health, the BOHA. I, this evening, received a call from our engineer. The BOHA is already done. We've expended the money, done the tests. He just can't get approval until we have the variance. So we feel like we're being held up here, and it's endangering our contract and our purchase of this real estate for reasons that we can't comprehend. This is the historical, obvious usage of this access. The highway department's been to look at it. You can see left and see right. I would also point out to the board that on the right-hand side of Grassmere's estate is owned by... Belongs to the 10 acres, and the left-hand side belongs to the town. So in effect, Grassmere is a flag lot. It's just the driveway is all they have here. And if we're held hostage until indefinitely, until something gets figured about resorts, then this would be very disadvantageous to us.
Well, we definitely don't want to hold you hostage, but we do need to have you go before the ZBA so that we can act. And I think what the Board of Health is waiting for is for us to be able to make the seeker determination so that they can then do the permit. It's basically a procedural thing with them. It's not...
Correct. We've done all the work, all the preparation, everything, all's been done.
I think normally our tendency on a town road like this would be to be guided by Kathy Cancel in terms of what she feels is the best, you know, solution to a driveway issue.
Has she not spoken? I think she has.
Yeah, she has. I'm just, you know, we'll probably want to get something in writing from her, just given the nature of the discussion here.
From what we understand, Michael, we are buying a residential zoned lot...
Yes.
...next to a residential zoned lot.
Correct.
And we're being held to account to some commercial end that is speculative and that is open-ended in nature.
No, in this case, you're really not.
No.
Basically, the process that we're... The process has been held... I think part of the variance issue, determining exactly how much of a variance you would need so that you could go before the ZBA. Until the ZBA acts, you don't have road...
No, no. I mean to say what Jonathan was just saying then about what, you know, how they're gonna maneuver their entrance to Grassmere.
Well, that's not something that really is necessarily the thing that's gonna pivot when we decide here.
Okay.
As I say, basically, it's gonna be the highway superintendent's discussion of what she feels is safe and proper for that road. And I believe she has already said she finds this one to be good. We just need to get something in writing, I think. You need to get before the ZBA. I see nothing wrong with what you're proposing here in terms of the ZBA being able to look at it.
They're on the agenda.
Okay. And I think they meet twice. What we're gonna do is continue this public hearing to our November meeting, at which time, if everything is wrapped up and everything is taken care of, we'll be able to close the public hearing, do the seeker determination, close the public hearing, and we would have a draft resolution of approval for this minor subdivision.
That's great. I just would emphasize to the board, and thank you for your attention to this, but emphasized timeliness is an issue here. We have to close this.
And we do appreciate that.
Great.
We do appreciate that. And I do think, you know, Gina, John, and all, maybe you guys can sit down and see if there is a... if there is a, some way. And we'll get Kathy involved in it too, and that, then it'll be on her head, and let her deal with it.
The reason why that driveway can't be moved further away is because of the old growth?
Part of it, you have to go further down, but apparently the two contracts for sale for the two lots determine exactly how much land could be transferred from the large lot to the 10-acre lot. And to go further down, the way the contracts are currently written, would go beyond that stipulation. And since they're both in contract, there's a certain legal--
That's not our contract, by the way. And we, and we, you know, remain open to solutions, but we just want a solution.
And if, you know, that's another thing to discuss with the lawyers once again. Is there a place further down where you could actually go in and bring that in?
But we've looked at it my--
Yeah, I know. I'm just, it's just another option. I'm not saying it's necessarily a good one. I'm just saying it's, you know, another option.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I hear a motion to continue this public hearing until--
18 November at 6:35.
Motion?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you.
Joan, that's 18 November at 6:35.
Okay. Our final public hearing tonight. Carol Lee, 373 Ackert Hook Road, special use permit. Public hearing on application for special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125, zoning attachment to district schedule of use regulations and Section 125-68D to authorize an accessory dwelling unit within a single-family principal residence structure in the rural countryside RC5 district being an unlisted action under seeker. And you are the applicant. And basically what you have is you want to do is you want to have an accessory apartment within your, within your home. Okay. Who, who did the site visit?
I went.
Okay. Jesse, could you report on that?
Yep. I went, the, driving up, she's actually, you have a great spot up there. Beautiful. You have a great spot up there tonight. She has a great view of the, of the mountains, the river, and the Chinon area. The apartment looks like it's part of the old house. You don't even see anything. Looks like one house. There's no, no addition added on or anything. It's a modest apartment. It's fairly small. I didn't really see anything. There's nothing wrong with it. It wasn't like there was a big addition added on or anything. It was basically part of the house with a separate door.
Anyone, who went with you?
I, I think I went on my, I basically went on my own.
Okay, okay. I've been talking with Jeff Romano again today. He didn't have any concerns from the CAB standpoint on this, so there was nothing there. Any other questions from members of the board?
Yeah, I, I was unable to make it, but I was asking Jesse basically why, in what section of our code mandates us to go out and even get involved with this? Why isn't it just a building department?
It's a, because it requires a special permit for an accessory dwelling.
But it already existed, right?
By mistake.
Okay. So we're, we're legalizing what was done incorrectly in the past?
We're doing forgiveness rather than prior permission--
Understood.
--so to speak. In a manner of speaking. Anything else from members of the board? Comment from the public?
Yes.
Yes.
I live several houses down from Carol, and the house is listed as a two-family year-round residence. Is this a third apartment?
No. It, it's been on the tax rolls as a two-family apartment. I thought it was legal, but--
Okay.
That's why we didn't make it legal.
Interesting. Well, actually, it may well have been--
I'm on the tax rolls for 25 years, like that.
Yeah. It may well have, I think--
Doesn't mean anything.
No? Assessor doesn't?
Nope.
Okay, you still need the permit.
Perhaps you're due a little reimbursement.
Yeah. 25 years of, yeah. Good point. Thank you. No, it's, it's, it's the one--
The reason I ask is because my house, which is smaller than hers, is assessed, the house portion, about double of hers.
Yeah, that's--
And I'm looking, I'm looking, the assessment says it's, it's a two-family house with electric key and no fireplace. And why do they have a fireplace? Two, three chimneys, but no fireplace and no oil key.
Yeah. I understand you're, that's unfortunately a question for the assessor. We have absolutely no control over what the assessor does. But that's a, that's a worthy question to--
But has the fire, did you notice the property, did you have a phenomenally inspected?
I have no idea. I have no idea. But what happened here is, once this permit, if this permit is approved in site plan, then the building inspector has to go and inspect to make sure that a CO can be issued. Probably a building permit after it will be issued, and then an inspection, and then a CO after that. So it would be inspected before it could be employed.
Building, the, what, the--
Yep. Everything, everything having entailed with that, yes, would have to be. And as I say, once again, with the assessment, you know, you're on your own on that one. We can't help you with that.
Michael, is it possible that the building inspector did not realize that that was a two-family house, and perhaps it ought to be sent back to him for clarification?
Probably it would actually be the CEO who would make that determination.
Well, whomever, whoever wrote the--
Well, I think as Art says, the assessment doesn't necessarily--
The assessment does not, the assessment role does not confirm what the particular land use is any more than a tax map that somewhere, or, or let's say a deed that someone has describing three, three parcels or a tax map identification, three parcels means that those properties have been properly subdivided.
Okay. Well, my concern is--
And in this case, the, the CEO did review this particular case and issue a memorandum to the board recommending that the matter be considered and approved based upon, I think he said something about the circumstances of the case--
Right.
--or something of that sort.
Okay.
Which I think meant, meant that there was an oversight in the past.
Right.
Okay. But I just wanted to see if indeed it was a mistake, but then let's clarify.
It's a good point.
You do, you do have--
But, but we could be done with this tonight.
Yes, well, I hope to be.
You've got, you've got two resolutions on pages six and seven.
Yeah. Any other public comment?
I live down over the hill from her. My property backs up to hers, and I don't ever hear anything unless there's a party up there.
Okay.
Your lessons.
Okay.
So-- Yeah, the big roads or something like that, I hear them. There's other than that.
Yeah.
I have a party on the corner tomorrow.
Yeah, I really never hear nothing, never see anything. I mind my business. Mine's hers, I believe.
Thank you.
It goes well.
Any other public comment? Members of the board? Hearing none. What I will do is I have a draft secret resolution. And I hope I have the right one.
Page six.
I do. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts within the uncoordinated environmental quality review as follows in the matter of proposed action involving an August 29th, 2013 application by Carol Lee for special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125, zoning attachment to district schedule of use regulations and Section 125-68D to authorize a 616-square-foot accessory dwelling unit within a single-family principal residential structure in a 25.252-acre parcel in the rural countryside district. All is depicted or otherwise described in the application, including supporting sketch, site, and floor plans, and a short EAF Part 1 certified by Ms. Lee and subject of a memorandum of the same date from Christian Fekete, Town Zoning Enforcement Officer. One, determines upon review of EAF Part 1 certified by the applicant and its own completion of EAF Part 2 in consideration of the criteria for determining significance set forth at Title 6, Part 617.7C NYCRR, that the proposed action as described in the application and being an unlisted action will cause no potential significant adverse impact on the environment and thus issues a negative declaration, determination of non-significance, deeming an environmental impact statement to not be required and stating such will not be prepared. Two, authorizes the chairman to so execute the first page of the short EAF and directs the planning board clerk to distribute and file without requirement for publication the short EAF with negative declaration annotation in a manner set forth within the secret implementing regulations, Title 6, Part 617.12 NYCRR. Could I hear a motion to approve? Removed. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And I will move right on to the draft resolution, approval resolution. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the August 29th, 2013 application by Carol Lee for special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125, zoning attachment to district schedule of use regulations and Section 125-68D to authorize a 616-square-foot accessory dwelling unit within a single-family principal residential structure in a 25.252-acre parcel in the rural countryside district. All is depicted and/or otherwise described in the application, including supporting sketch, site, and floor plans, and a short EAF Part 1 certified by Ms. Lee and subject of a memorandum of the same date from Christian Fekete, Town Zoning Enforcement Officer. The proposed action, subject of a negative declaration, determination of non-significance, heretofore issued by the planning board. One, finds the proposed accessory dwelling unit to in no way contravene either the general standards for all special use permits set forth in Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-67, or the specific standards set forth at Section 125-68D for said use. Grants the requested special use permit and authorizes the clerk to so notify the Town Zoning Enforcement Officer upon the applicant's payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Rhinebeck with respect to the submission, review, and processing of this application under Town Code Chapter 125 and the town's fee schedule and related executed escrow agreement. Three, subsequent to such notification by the clerk, authorizes the zoning enforcement officer to issue a building permit and subsequently a certificate of occupancy use for the proposed improvement, subject to compliance with all other codes, laws, rules, and/or regulations within its purview, including documentation of approval by the Dutchess County Health Department as may be required due to the increase, increase occurring in number of bedrooms served by existing onsite sanitary sewage facilities. Okay. And also, I believe we also, under, under number two, grants the requested special use permit and approves site plan.
There was no application for site plan.
Oh, we didn't need that. Oh, we didn't need that.
No, you don't need it for, for--
Right. Right, we didn't. Okay, we're good. Phew, well, we caught that one. Could I hear a motion to approve, please?
Vote.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll poll the board. Richard?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. You're all set. Moving right along to our next approval resolution. This would be Core Group--
Core Group.
Page four. Okay. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the August 2, 2013 applications by Core Group Properties LLC for special use permit pursuant to Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Sections 12520 and 12568-E, and site plan approval pursuant to Section 12573. There in the matter of a proposed special event venue in the Office Research Park District, all is depicted on three site plan drawings, site plan cover sheet CS1 dated August 2, 2013, site plan prepared for the greenhouse at Rhinebeck dated January 17, 2012, and marked P1 of 3, and proposed site plan P2 dated August 12, 2013. All is prepared by DF Wheeler engineers and in supporting data, including a project narrative, a full environmental assessment form Part 1 certified by DF Wheeler and dated August 12, 2013, an agricultural data statement, and both an application to the Dutchess County Health Department for approval of plans for a wastewater disposal system submitted on September 16, 2013, and an application to the New York State Department of Health of approval of plans for public water supply improvements submitted on October 8, 2013, each by DF Wheeler engineers, all being part of a proposed action subject to a negative declaration, determination of non-significance, heretofore issued by the planning board. In consideration of the application for special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning to authorize establishment of a special event venue, A, determines the proposed use to in no way contravene any of the general standards for all special use permit uses set forth in Section 125-67. B, further determines the proposed use to be in conformance with the specific standards for a special event venue as set forth in Section 125-68-E. C, grants the special use permit pursuant to said Chapter 125 of the Town Code and subject to the following prerequisite conditions and/or requirements. One, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Rhinebeck with respect to submission, review, and processing of this application under Town Code Chapter 125, the town's fee schedule, and executed escrow agreement. Two, securing of site plan approval for the proposed use. Two, in consideration of the application for site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, inclusive of both the aforementioned site plan drawings and supporting documentation and copies of applications submitted to the Dutchess County Health Department and the New York State Department of Health for approval permitting of proposed onsite sanitary sewage facilities and water supply arrangements. A, approves the application for site plan approval and authorizes the chairman to stamp and sign the site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of each of the below conditions and/or requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. One, securing the design approval from the Dutchess County Health Department for a proposed onsite sanitary sewage facilities. Two, securing of approval of a public water supply from the New York State Department of Health in the matter of proposed onsite water supply arrangements. Three--
Submission of a common driveway ownership, access, and maintenance agreement for review and approval by the planning board attorney and recording in the Dutchess County Clerk's office. And four, modification of the heretofore submitted site plan drawings to address to the satisfaction of the planning board engineer and the chairman, the other comments that forth in the planning engineer, uh, board engineer's review letter of October 21, 2013.
Five, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Rhinebeck with respect to the submission, review, processing of this application under Town Code Chapter 125, the town's fee schedule, and executed escrow agreement. In taking this action, the planning board further authorizes the Town Zoning Enforcement Officer to issue a certificate of occupancy for the proposed special event venue and associated site improvements upon the applicant's completion of all work set forth on the approved site plan, including those components within the purview of the Dutchess County Health Department and/or the New York State Department of Health, and the satisfaction of all other codes, laws, rules, or regulations within the purview of the CEO and/or building inspector, including but not limited to the requirements of the New York State Uniform Building, Construction, and Fire Prevention Code. All right. Could I hear a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. Poll the board. Sharon?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. So you're done with us?
I agree.
All right.
Joan's gonna have a presentation.
Cool. Okay. For those sitting here, what we're doing now. Jonathan Mensch, Mensch Grasmere LLC, Mill Road and New York State Route 9 South, special use permit, wetlands permit, and site plan approval. Continuation of sequence process as advanced on September 16, 2013, through acceptance of generic EIS scoping outline in the matter of the proposed Grasmere Farm Hotel at Country and 2 in the rural agricultural RA10 and Hudson River National Historic Landmark Districts in the town's local waterfront revitalization area, being a type 1 act under seeker. Applicant presentation of draft GEIS and planning board consultants' recommendations concerning next steps, i.e. determination concerning adequacy of draft GEIS for public review and comment, and when deemed so, issuance of a notice of completion of draft GEIS, and scheduling a related public hearing.
It's just a dry run for our public hearing.
You gonna stand on it?
Thanks, John.
You've done a good job with this.
This was on the wall, and next time--
Yeah.
On the wall.
I wonder if I can turn out that first--
Turn out the lights.
Light.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that one. I think that's it. How's that?
You'll soon find out.
It's good as it's gonna get.
Works for us, but works for you. I do apologize that we didn't get a chance to get here and get set up before. We had talked earlier in the week about whether we do a PowerPoint presentation tonight. We do not want to go through all of the detail and what we handed out to you. of the EIS. We're gonna go through portions of this this evening as quickly as we can because we're really looking at a public review. I'll be ready to put this out for public. That's where we are with the GEIS right now. And so we're not, I'm assuming, there's any public comment back yet. Hearing hasn't been set. It's really just to say that GEIS was done in compliance with the outline. My view is the board satisfied that it's ready to go out for public review. Just let me get this up first. Technology, when we do a public hearing, we set this up in advance off the side, and when you're ready to go, we'll push the play button.
Maybe we can shoot it up at the wall right over there.
Well, I think maybe we should do that.
Yeah, for the public.
Or I can modify the projection. And we'll bring it.
Yeah, the wall's actually good. They don't have to worry about a screen.
More people can see.
Yeah.
Maybe you bring that bass computer you have at home, too?
Believe it or not, this thing could learn. Okay. Doesn't like starting up with a projector attached to it.
I don't know if it's still there.
We'll have to find out.
What I can do, since I can kind of go through the first slides that you would have on your.
Excuse me, can you use the microphone, please?
Sure.
While we're waiting for this to launch, ah, here we go. Never mind.
No sooner said than done.
All right, here we go. My name is John Montane with Greeman, Peterson Engineers. With me tonight is Jonathan Mensch, the applicant for the project. Our purpose here tonight, as I said, is to really introduce the generic environmental impact statement, the draft version of it, that has been prepared for this. We prepared it in compliance with the outline scope that was worked out with the board in the past. The document that I handed out to you has all of these parts in it. There's an introductory section that John's gonna do, talks a little bit about the history of the site and the project for anybody that hasn't been introduced to it yet, especially important for the public hearing. John's gonna go through the project purpose, a little bit on the design architecture that goes along with that, and he's gonna discuss our LWRP relationship, which is rather significant for this project. I'm gonna then touch base quickly on where we stand on the GEIS process, the remaining steps on that. I have tables in here that I'm not gonna go through in detail, but they talk about each one of the sections that were looked at in the GEIS, followed by a section on the alternatives that were looked at and growth-inducing aspects that John's gonna talk about. We also have a slide in here that just lists the future actions for everybody's edification, and then John's gonna have a few closing comments on the project attributes. And so I'll turn it over to John now.
John, do you have the? Yeah, I wanted to start, well, I wanted to start by moving back, I guess. But I wanted to start showing a couple images that have become very important images in terms of how we're thinking about the project and sort of what creates the soul of what we're trying to do. And they're both historic images, actually. The first is a map of Grasmere Farm. This is back when Ernest Crosby owned the property. This map is from 1918, and he's the last guy that really farmed the property in a really active way. He had broken up, you can see here, the entirety of the parcel into a bunch of different areas. Those areas are all different parts of the farm. So he had the pasture areas, and then this main open area here, which is the hayfield area. And this is the really important view shed of the property. And the way that works is up here is the manor house. It's called Grasmere House in the map. Then down here are the stone barns. These are the two existing structures that are on the property. And these two structures also serve as the real cornerstones of what we're planning to do with the hotel project. And I'd like to lead with this just because it speaks to what we're trying to do in reassembling the property and bringing it back to life. This next slide is actually from 1915. This shows the, it's about 46 acres in total. This is the area that, the estate grounds that we're earmarking as the hotel piece of the project. That's the area that's just at the top of the former map. But to acclimate everybody, this is the manor house up here. These are the stone barns. And what's interesting in looking at this diagram is we've got this series of roadways. We have the estate grounds up here, and you can see right in there that the old estate gardens. There's also an axis that existed back then between the manor house and the main field. So everything was really acclimated in such a way that a primary relationship was the relationship between this building and these grounds up here and this open field area up in here. You can also see here the old estate ponds, and these, right, this was combined at this point. Now they're separated, but these water features exist in the property and also come into play. And a lot of what exists in this image served as sort of a foundation for the way that we're looking at the site plan today. This is a little bit of the history of our family's ownership, and my father's here tonight. Wow. And this is back when he'd originally bought the main chunk of the property, which is about 450 acres. They included these stone barns, which prior to our ownership had been almost destroyed by fire. And you see in this image that this was almost the end of the stone barns. These are the stone barns today. We rebuilt the barns, and they end up becoming an important part of the project moving forward. This is the view shed that I was talking about. This is a photo that's taken from the side of the barns at the rear, at the end of the estate grounds. So when you're looking out over the hayfields, this is what you see. And this is the view shed that in every iteration of the site plan that we've worked on, maintaining this important view is a key cornerstone of what we're trying to do. You can also tell in looking at it that we've gotten this back now into productive use. We've gotten about 225 acres back as an active hay farming operation, and we'll be looking to build on the farming component of this as we move forward over time. Then this is the last piece. This is the old manor house. And as you may have gotten, our sort of relationship with this actually came in sort of through the back door. We bought the big piece of land, and the idea behind some of the purchase was to prevent that important view shed from being lost and prevent that land from being developed. In purchasing the manor house, what we've managed to do is really reassemble what you saw on that first map. And this manor house, obviously it's got a great history. It's a Livingston family property. It was originally built by Janet Livingston, her husband, General Richard Montgomery. It also suffered fire damage. It was substantially rebuilt in the early 1800s. And in recombining these two, we're bringing this property back largely to where it once was. But you'll see in this next slide, these are some images of the current condition of the house. It's really at an inflection point. The shell is still solid, but a lot of the pieces of the building are really starting to show the signs of disrepair. It needs a new roof. It needs all-new systems. A lot of the pieces of it are really starting to decay. An important part of what we're trying to do is to create an economically viable use for the property that will also allow us to rehabilitate this structure, which is about 16,000 square feet, and it's gonna be incredibly expensive to fix. This is the project purpose. Now we're getting into the actual, the GEIS that we submitted to you, and this is the opening part of that. We'll show a little bit how these work, but the, these are the different components. The first is the adaptive reuse of the manor house and the estate grounds as a boutique hotel. Again, that's focused on this area up here. The sum total of what would be built is 110 lodging units. Those are combined of guest rooms, suites, and then eco cabins, and we'll explain what those are. The next is a restaurant and an event center, which would be focused around the stone barns, a spa facility, which is also part of the estate area, and then over time, an enhancement of what we've already been doing with respect to the farming program. The entire property would require underzoning, 250 acres. We have a total of 525 acres. The 250 acres would be earmarked for the Grasmere Farm Hotel. Then we've also got a structure in which a lot of the parking that's onsite and the cars that are onsite are really being moved to the side. We don't want the estate grounds to be overrun by cars and driving and parking, so we're pushing that out to the side. We're also trying to use the historic roadways and entrances as part of the program. We'll get to the different pieces. This is the site plan blown up, and I know you guys have seen this in large part. Quickly, the manor house up here, these are guest wings. This is the stone barns in here. These are the eco cabins, and then this is a to-be-built carriage house building. This is, these are, just to explain how some of it works a little more detailed, this is the existing manor house. This is a massing diagram. What this shows, this building's three and a half stories high. The idea is that this building still commands the situation. There's outbuildings which serve as lodging units here. The spa buildings are over here, but the real intent is to keep this building front and center. This is now the stone barns. These are the existing structures, the barns, the carriage house. This is a to-be-built event pavilion. This is in a closed building that will be soundproofed. When large events were being held on the property, they would be held in this building, and that would be built as part of the barns complex. We can keep going. This is then the coach house, which is a structure that would be built for guest lodging units in keeping with the spirit and the context of the estate property. The last piece are these eco cabins, and we're calling them eco cabins because they're built, they're built up on piers so that they can be placed into the landscape. They're also prefabricated buildings. They could be largely built offsite and then erected with minimal impact on the property itself. Then these are the entrances. The primary entrances are these two off of Route 9. This one is the one that would get the most heavily, the most traffic. This is south on Route 9. If you look up in here, you can actually see the remnants of the old wrought iron gate and some of the brick that announced this entrance. This would get restored. Obviously, a lot of clearing work would need to take place to, as traffic was coming back here. This is the second primary entrance, which would be for the staff and service. This is also off of Route 9, utilizing these two existing pillars. And the last piece is, well, the piece that was discussed a little while ago, this is the existing historic entrance. We would like to continue to use this entrance, but for hotel guests only. We are cognizant of traffic on Mill Road, and we're trying to create a structure in which, it's an important entrance because of these locust trees that were planted by Janet Livingston to honor the soldiers that died in the, back in the Revolutionary War, and also to honor her husband. It's the primary access point for the property today. We want to limit that use, though, to hotel guests only because we want those people to experience it, but we don't want to overrun Mill Road with traffic. That's, these two are being built specifically to handle 70 to 80% of the anticipated traffic for the property. The next piece is the LWRP, and I spent a lot of time reading through the LWRP, and it's an important document. It was actually a very interesting document to read. I hadn't read it before we started this project. And I'll just, some of the highlights that were spoken to in the LWRP are very applicable to what we're trying to do with this project. And the first is Policy 1A, which is sort of the lead here, and that's to encourage growth of the tourism sector, the town economy, through the revitalization and redevelopment, preservation, enhancement in areas and structures in the LWRP and the historic districts. The LWRP, a lot of it is the area red along the river, but it also includes the estate area and the Mill Road subunit, which is where Grasmere is located. And a lot of what's spoken to here is obviously what we're trying to do. These next two really restate the same ideas, you know, Policy 23A, conserve, protect, preserve, and promote the adaptive reuse of places, sites, structures, views, and features in the coastal area of the Town of Rhinebeck of special historic and cultural use. That's obviously applicable to what we're doing, and that's exactly what we're trying to do through this project. This next area, and this is all in the GEIS and in the written material, I won't go through all of this, but a lot of what is spoken to here are priorities for the way development should happen, especially development that's associated with historic structures. And that goes to clustering, clustering structures in order to preserve important view sheds, to preserve open space, to preserve historic landscapes. All of that is what we are trying to do with this property and with this project. And the last few that are being spoken to here, the preservation of agricultural lands. The farming component is an important part of what we're developing over time on the property, and we very much want to preserve that. It's not prime soils, but I think we can do some pretty interesting things with the land over time. And then the next are some of what we get into in the GEIS, which are best management practices for stormwater and the wastewater treatment facility, and then also the habitat and wetland studies that we've done and the way that the site planning interacts with the results of those studies.
Thanks, John. I'm just gonna talk briefly about where we are, how we got here, and where we're going. We brought in the application back in June, and that application was a special use permit that triggered the secret process. At that time, we made a request that the planning board consider being lead agency. The board did decide to circulate their intent to be lead agency in July. After the lead agency process was completed and the board became lead agency, the board accepted a draft outline from the applicant, which was then circulated to all involved agencies, interested parties. That outline became the basis of the draft generic environmental impact statement. That impact statement has been completed, the draft of it, and is before you tonight to begin your consideration and hopefully your determination that we're at a point where we're ready to go out for public review by deeming the document complete. So that's where we're at. So what's next? Obviously, the next step is for the board to issue a certificate of completeness. Lead agency would post the GEIS for public review. There is a minimum 30-day public comment period, but that comment period can be extended on agreement with the applicant. We do anticipate there'll be a public hearing for this, so setting that public hearing date is one of the things we'd like you to consider and set that forth as soon as possible. During the public comment period, all written comments from involved agencies, interested parties, and the public are gathered. Within 45 days of that public hearing, the lead agency is at a point where if there's no extension in mutual agreement with the applicant, they're supposed to start doing the final generic environmental impact statement. The FGIS is actually a document that discusses all of the substantive comments that have come during the public review period. The GEIS, the DGIS, the draft, does not have to be included in the FGIS, but it's usually just put by reference. So that's why it's important to make sure that this document stands alone and is a good quality document.
John, just so we don't have to come back to that, and I don't have to replicate for the board that recitation of the remaining steps in the process, the only thing I would add to that is that if a public hearing is conducted, then the period for receipt of written comments has to extend for at least 10 days beyond the public hearing.
Sure.
Other than that, that is precisely the process that is being recommended, that is required under seeker and being recommended for the board to follow up.
Final step, which is going out the doorway here, talks about findings. So that's the final step. The main body of the EIS is, are these three components. An environmental evaluation is part three. That's what makes up the body of what you have, and almost all of the appendices that are part of the GEIS are in support of this section. There's also a discussion on alternatives that John's gonna talk about briefly. Always have to talk about the no action. What happens if you don't do this project to what you've got here? And then John's gonna talk about some of the alternative designs and layouts. And then clearly, one of the most important things whenever you do a large project is what's the impact gonna be on the rest of the community? What's the growth-inducing aspects of the project? There were 14 sections in the GEIS outline that we looked at, and what we've concluded in the executive summary for all of you is, are these tables that I have before you right now. I'm not gonna go into the detail on every one of these, but it's a general discussion of the, of each category's potential impacts on the environment, and then the mitigation measures and/or the results of design that mitigates that. And, you know, John went into quite a bit of detail of how much time was put in looking at how to have as light a footprint on this property as possible, preserving that open space, looking at ways to manage stormwater so that it's not an impact on the environment, using the existing infrastructure and roadways, all as part of that design. Through that process, we looked at, obviously, the categories you see here, soils, topography, water, surface water runoff and stormwater. There is, you'll see in the discussion in the growth inducing, there's a section on water. We have discussed with the village extending the water main. There's about 730 feet of water main that would extend down Route 9. Doesn't have a lot of frontage. There are a lot of other properties on there, but it's important to discuss that that might be a, an opportunity for other people to tie into that village system. Most of the other impacts I'll let John talk about, or, excuse me, the other growth-inducing aspects I'll let John talk about. Wastewater, we, because we have intermittent streams on the site, we've already met with DEC, that information is in there. We'll be treating to tertiary design standards, which is the highest level of wastewater treatment. And then on top of that, the town's wetlands regulations require that we cannot discharge directly to an intermittent stream, and as we've discussed with the board before, we're gonna do, we're gonna create a man-made wetland, which acts as another filter, and then the water from that will drain into the stream. On the land use side, John talked a little bit about LWRP and also the fact that we are in the Country Inn 2 overlay, and if you look at the language on that, we're very much in compliance with that, and we use that as a guide for our development strategy. The visual character, for us, the main visual issue here is to make sure that whatever we build on the property isn't compatible with the historic structures. We know that noise was a discussion and a concern. We did a noise impact analysis. That analysis really looked at two things. It looked at the distance from our event pavilion to any adjacent residential properties, the receptors of the noise, and sound dissipates over distance, and so there's a distance decay formula that's in there. And then the other thing is vegetation. Heavy dense vegetation is also another significant mitigator of sound level pressure waves and noise, obviously. And because the site is located in the center of an area that's heavily wooded all around it, we get a lot of mitigation for that. After looking at all of that, there really is absolutely no decibel level increase that's gonna be significant to trigger any of the levels that are both in the town regulations or federal standards or state seeker standards. And on top of that, as John mentioned, one of the most important parts of the event area is the development of the event pavilion. So large events will be held in that event pavilion, and the intent is that that also helps to make sure that we don't have any nuisance or offsite noise.
Just out of curiosity, large events, what are we talking in round numbers proposed for the event?
Yeah, I mean, a large wedding's a couple hundred people.
Oh, you know, less than 500 or less than 300?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's not impossible. Well, I think it would be hard for anything more than a couple hundred.
I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, really, the primary goal is that is, the large events would be, and then it's any corporate side of the town.
The last section that I really want to pay a little bit of time on is on traffic. There's been a lot of discussion about, you know, how do you access the site and how's your traffic done? It's very important to reiterate that we have three entrances here, but there's really two primary entrances, and those both come off of Route 9. The main entrance, which is the furthest south on Route 9, is the entrance that gets you into the restaurant and the event pavilion where you would have a case where you might have 200 guests coming to a property. So it's as far away from the village as we can be, and it's an independent drive that comes in. We're gonna make sure that maintenance and staff all come in off of Route 9 also in a separate entrance. We have two reasons for that. One, obviously, you wanna get people in and out off of Route 9 easily, but for us, we also wanna isolate that maintenance traffic and all of that service traffic from the main parts on the site, so it makes logical sense for us. And then John's already spoken to the fact that we do still think it's really important for the ambiance and the feel of this to allow guests for the hotel, especially the manor house, to be able to come in the historic drive, but we're anticipating that being, you know, 10 to 20% maximum at any given time on the traffic.
And how do you monitor that traffic flow? Like, if the general public wanted to come in on the Mill Road side?
Well, I think the way that you're gonna do that primarily is that the only, there'll be signage that says guest entrance only for the hotel. Your main entrance signs will be very obvious that your main entrance is along Route 9. We'll have, you know, a grand entrance, signage, restaurant, all the rest of that. You will not be able to get from the manor house road to the barns unless you go down a service drive that we have, and, you know, and the intent is that that hierarchy, just on that road structure alone, discourages people from doing that. Now, are you gonna have local residents that wanna come in and show their family how to do it? We're not gonna necessarily be able to stop that, but that's not your high-volume challenge. be signage that says guest entrance only for the hotel. Your main entrance signs will be very obvious, your main entrance is along Route 9. We'll have, you know, a grand entrance, signage, restaurant, all the rest of that. You will not be able to get from the manor house road to the barns unless you go down a service drive that we have, and, you know, and the intent is that that hierarchy, just on that road structure alone, discourages people from doing that. Now, are you going to have local residents that want to come in and show their family how to do it? We're not going to necessarily be able to stop that, but that's not your high-volume traffic. That's a few local people here and there that know the area and want to come in and have that. So I think that's how, you know, that's what we envision for that. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to John. He spent some time working on the alternatives. He'll do that, and we'll wrap this up here for you tonight.
Yeah, this is just to run through the different alternatives. And the first, as John had said, was the no-action alternative. That's what would happen if we didn't do anything with the property. And the reality is that, as I mentioned earlier, the manor house is at a pretty, it's at an inflection point, and it's very hard to imagine somebody spending the money that it would take to fix that building up without there being some kind of a different use for it. We're talking about a 16,000-square-foot building. We're talking about per-square-foot costs on that that are huge, so you're talking about a really significant amount of money to fix the building up. If something like this doesn't happen, it's, there's a lot of risk that it would just continue to decay over time, and there's a lot of examples of properties in which that's happened. We don't want Grassmere to be one of them. And the other possibility is that, I mean, we weren't, or it would be very difficult for us to continue to own that whole property without having a use for it. We bought it with the priority of trying to keep it as open space, but we're not in a position to just do that in perpetuity. It's a very difficult thing to do. Taxes go up, cost of ownership goes up, so at some point, somebody would do something else with the property. We think that we've got a better plan than almost anything else that's unimaginable, particularly a subdivision of the mainland, which is another thing that people might look at over time. The other thing also that the no-action alternative would not do is provide the economic benefits that we're talking about this property providing, both with respect to jobs and with respect to promoting spending in the community. So that's another thing that wouldn't be happening. We looked at a couple of different alternative development scenarios. This is one that we had looked at over time and spent a lot of time on. In this scenario, it was the same set of priorities that we're still bringing to it today. The idea was that this main view shed would remain open. We were trying to keep the scale and spirit of the property intact. The way we were accomplishing it in this construct is to actually bury some of the guest rooms here and here into the slopes. The other thing that we were doing is adding a lot more volume here. We're creating more of a linear construct. This would be an extended foundation that was running the entire length of the ponds. The reason that we moved away from this was really twofold. The first is that this, the impact of this kind of construction would have been well, well, well in excess of what we're talking about today. We would have probably had to clear out all of these areas. We would have lost a lot of these trees, and then we would have been building on top of a long foundation. The idea of doing this in the context of smaller eco cabins, which with a lighter footprint to keep the trees, was a much more appealing scenario. The second is that concern, there were concerns about the guest experience in terms of coming down below ground and then being in guest rooms in which you were essentially sort of buried into the slopes. So we didn't pursue that. This next one was a very sort of different approach to the same set of issues, and it was, again, to try to keep this scale and feel close to where it is today. And the way we tried to solve the problem in this situation is we actually added to the building area. This would be a to-be-built water feature, which we were looking at as a vehicle to create guest cabins that would then go around here. There were guest cabins up still in this area, some guest cabins down here, down here as well. Basically, it spread everything out. The concern about this was that it started to feel like sprawl. We were, we felt like we were creating a situation in which just too much area was being impacted in a way that didn't also provide a cohesive center to it. And there was a real concern that as a guest, you would come and you'd have privacy, which would be nice in a cabin, but there was no sort of focal point to the operation. So we moved away from that, and both of these, they shared some of the same goals that we have today and had at the beginning of the project, which were really, again, to preserve this important view shed and to keep the scale and feel of this intact. It just, you know, in terms of ways to get there, we felt what we've arrived at is a much better solution. This is also the growth-inducing impacts, and this is part of what we had gotten to a little bit in the LWRP discussion and also the discussion on the no-action alternative. But really, where it goes is that there's a lot of very positive impacts that come out of this, and these are economic impacts. The primary market for this is New York City visitors. These are people that, this is induced demand on top of people that are coming to the area anyway, or people that might be attracted to come to the area now they have a place that they can get pretty excited about staying. What that translates to is a large number of visitors that are going to experience the area, shopping. Basically, they'll go in the village, they'll eat, they'll shop, they'll spend money. There's a major benefit to that in the local economy, and one of the things that comes out of that is that the, is that there's a multiplier effect. When money's spent in a local economy like Rhinebeck, it's spent at a local shop. The person that owns that local shop is also going to shop locally. That's money that starts to circulate through the economy on a local basis, and that's a pretty powerful thing. And that's going to bring that outside money in that can then get recycled. The other thing it can really help to do is it can help local farmers. Those are people that are at the farmer's market, and these are people that have their own stands and their own properties, and also people that could be selling goods to the restaurant itself. But the idea is that we will have people coming up and staying in the property that are going to be frequenting these places and that are going to have the resources to, and excitement, to have at the end of a weekend, you know, a trunk full of produce that they can take back to New York or wherever they live. And that's a really positive thing economically for the area. John?
We aren't exactly sure where to put this in the presentation, but it's an important part of the EIS. You have to identify what your future actions are and what your project permitting and approvals are. We've outlined, you know, you start off with, there are quite a few additional steps that we'll be taking with the town. We still have to get the special use permit approved. Then we have phase site plan approvals, and I won't go through all of these, but they're all in there for reference. We have a number of actions that we have to do with state agencies. Department of Environmental Conservation, obviously, for sanitary and stormwater and water supply. Department of Transportation for our access routes on Route 9. Again, Department of Health for water supply, and we have Parks and Recreations, especially if we're going to do any tax financing, and we need a letter of no effect on our cultural resources and coordination on the historic character.
Then this is really just a reiteration of some of what we've touched on. These are some of the project attributes that we think are pretty important. And the first is the rehabilitation and the preservation of the historic structures in the property, the preservation of open space in the historic view sheds, reestablishing over time more of the artisanal farm operation, the environmentally-driven site plan and building design. And then also this idea here, which we didn't really touch on earlier, but part of what we're doing is we're going to create a structure in which the stone barns in particular are going to be open to the public, and we want to have people in and enjoying those structures and experiencing the property. It's something that's come up a number of times when we've had events for the Rhinebeck Science Foundation, Winnicke, some of these other places that have used the property, and people come that live in Rhinebeck and, in some cases, were born in Rhinebeck, didn't even know it existed, and had never certainly been on the property. And it's pretty fun to think that those stone barns are going to be a part of the social fabric here. And then the other is the idea of promoting regional tourism and spending, which is some of the things that I talked about earlier.
So that concludes our presentation, and obviously, John and I are here to answer any questions you might have or anybody else.
Great job.
I think that presentation is the right way to present it. It's succinct, it's to a point.
Yeah, we were worried that we were going on too long, so I appreciate saying that.
No, no, I think the project is large enough that it needs to be put out in the public so everyone gets a piece of the action and understands what's going on.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think we will probably do that. I think, one thing Melody just mentioned, I think she's probably right, when we finally get to the point for the public presentation on this, we may just do that as the sole event for that night, given that most of the public isn't going to be as familiar with the details and things like that, and that might be the best way to do that. I know that you sent this all out to us electronically. I know I had a chance to go through it and whatnot. I'm certainly not an engineer or anything like that. I found nothing in here that I felt wasn't addressing the issues that we had raised or raised any red flag in my mind. I don't know how the rest of you feel about that, having, if you even had the chance to read through it, as I did.
I did, and I think it's done a really good job of going over all the points that have been raised. And the reason I talked about it being the sole agenda item is I think it, you know, you get other things on the agenda, people start feeling time pressures, and I think it warrants all the time that it needs to be presented to the public, really gets a good understanding of all of the things that you're talking about in this presentation.
Okay.
So I guess the question is, what does anyone on the board feel should have been addressed in the DGIS that wasn't or wasn't done adequately, if anything? As I said, I didn't come up with anything, but then again, of course, I'm not an architect, engineer, or whatnot. I guess the question is, are we at the point now where we feel this is ready for public review? That's my feeling, but I, you know.
Then it's my turn, I guess.
Yeah, go for it.
That's the case. Obviously, from the, as you read through my meeting notes for this meeting, you understand that I've had a very positive experience over the past month in working with this applicant and this applicant's Saker EIS preparer. I found not only the document to be wholly consistent with the scoping outline that was accepted by the board, but I was also been very pleased with the technical capability, essentially, of the applicant's team, as well as how well versed the applicant's team is in the secret process. And I think that was evident this evening when John presented, say, for instance, the next steps chart. So on to the next steps. I've certainly recommended that the DGIS, as submitted in its latest version, I believe it was last Tuesday or whatever day that was, be accepted. Its development over this past month has been on a blow-by-bow or point-by-point basis, addressing each of the comments that I had an opportunity to provide on interim drafts. It's wholly consistent with the scoping outline. That doesn't mean that there is not technical review to be conducted, and there's certainly going to be comment or opportunity, at least for comment, by the public and by each of the other interested and involved agencies. In this particular instance, in recognition of, I think Woody just commented that this was a, you know, a very significant project in community and based on the scale of the project, not only do I think the board should, do I believe the board should follow the letter of Saker in terms of the extent of the comment period, et cetera, but go a couple of additional steps. One is in terms of the, and I provided for in the draft, this in the draft materials, in addition to the typical distribution of the document to the agencies and indication in public notice that the document's available for public review at Town Hall, et cetera, I believe, if it can be worked out, the document should clearly be posted on the town website to facilitate review, and for those who do not have access to that technology, that there be copies, hard copies of the document made available at the Star Library and the Morton Library. I also, I'm kind of going to follow up on a comment that Melody made. My thought on scheduling a public hearing was that this should clearly be scheduled as, if it was going to happen at the November meeting, it would be scheduled as the last item on the agenda. It looks like a relatively short meeting, so therefore I said, well, this could happen at 7:30, and the board could conduct its other business beforehand, so the board can decide as to whether that's appropriate or, as Melody suggested, is there another date that would work, which would be devoted exclusively to this particular project and not run the risk of there being interference with other items. In terms of schedule, what I had suggested in the materials that were presented was that the public hearing actually be conducted on November 18th, and that the public hearing be continued, not the public hearing be continued, the period for written comments be continued until November, until December 2nd, I believe, that first Monday of December, which would then allow for a couple of weeks for consideration of those comments before the board got to its December meeting, at which point the board would then advise the applicant as to which of the comments, and likely all comments, would be addressed in the final generic EIS. So that's the spirit of what's before you. I prepared a draft procedural resolution, which is in the meeting notes, the initial meeting notes I sent out. That resolution begins on page 10. In the supplement to the meeting notes that was sent out the next day, I added a couple of additional items to the, to that resolution. One is that, one dealt with this matter of posting on the website and making available at the library, and the second dealt with the fact that while adequacy or completeness review has occurred at this point in time, there still is the matter of the board directing that both Ray Jokowski of Morris Associates and myself review the technical aspects of the document. So that's what's on the table as a draft resolution, and complimentary to the draft resolution, I did provide a draft of the notice of completion of GEIS, notice of public hearing on GEIS, and, as authorized under Saker, the notice of the opening of the public hearing on the special use permit.
Okay, we all follow that? I think it's my turn to read. And start with the draft procedural resolution under Saker.
John, Michael, just if I might interject, probably the item that should be discussed right now is whether second part of meeting on November 18th or separate proceeding.
What? What do we have on the agenda so far?
You've got, you've got very, very little.
Yeah. Did we schedule any public hearings?
You've got a continuation on Ryan.
Right, yeah.
To the best of my knowledge, while there's some other things hanging out there, there's nothing that's, it's not evident that anything else is coming through the door. Much is coming through the door. There are going to be a couple of other public hearings that will be scheduled later this evening concerning Steve Mench's subdivision and John Imperatos', but they're not major undertakings.
You also could perhaps back it up and start at 6:00.
The regular meeting.
Start the regular meeting at 6:00 and hope to conclude by 6:30, so you're jumping.
Well, yeah, I was saying 7:30 for this anyway.
Gain you a little bit more time, rather than a second meeting.
I concur with the single meeting, put them on the end, for all the reasons we've talked about, but also another reason, if we, in my opinion, if we put it out there by itself, it's liable to draw, I'll call it, unwarranted attention. Why are they doing this? So I would just put it in the normal flow of things, you know, what are they hiding? You know how people's mentalities are at times, and I would say go with the back end of the one meeting.
Let's see what I have in here. Yes, ma'am?
No, Thanksgiving is, Thanksgiving is 10 days later this year. Thanksgiving does not occur until the, I believe Thanksgiving is not until like the 28th or 9th. We're talking about the 18th for the meeting here. Thanksgiving's very late.
But you can make us turkey dinner if you'd like to.
That's also, that's also, however, a reason not to defer beyond the 18th, because suddenly we start getting into, quote, "holiday season," beginning with Thanksgiving and... The resolution provides for the 18th at 7:30.
Okay. Well, I guess before I get into that, then, are we going to need an hour and a half on that day before we get into this? I don't, I think 6:30 probably would be okay.
Sounds fine.
Unless a disaster comes up, in which case we just do what we always do, we push you guys back until like midnight. Okay, well, let me, let me read this and see what everyone thinks. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board is duly confirmed secret lead agency hereby access follows in the matter of a proposed action by Mench Grassmere LLC applicant involving development of the Grassmere Farm Hotel within a 250-acre set aside of a 525-acre property development of the Grassmere Farm Hotel within a 250-acre set aside of a 525-acre property on Mill Road and New York State Route 9 South in the Rural Agricultural RA-10 and Hudson River National Historic Landmark Districts and the town's local waterfront revitalization area, being the subject of an application for special use permit for a country in two submitted by the, submitted to the planning board in July 1st, 2013, and heretofore classified as a type-one action under seeker for which coordinated environmental quality review is required." Excuse me. "One, determines the draft G EIS prepared by GPI as first submitted to the planning board on October 7th, 2013, and is its present form on October 16th, 2013. Following review by Planners East is both comprehensive and consistent with the G EIS scope outline accepted by the planning board on September 16th, 2013, and thus adequate for public and agency review and comment. Two, determines it would be appropriate to conduct as part of the public and agency review process a seeker hearing, and to combine said hearing with a public hearing on the aforementioned application under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning for a special use permit for a country in two. Three, determines it would further be appropriate to schedule as an integral part of its due diligence review of the draft G EIS, a planning board field visit to the project site and invite both the public and agency representatives to attend. Four, in consideration thereof, authorizes the chairman and clerk to issue the annexed notice of completion of draft G EIS, notice of seeker hearing, and notice of public hearing on special use permit, with such issuance including each of the following: Distribution incurredance with six NYCRR 617.12B to all parties listed within the above notice; publication in the town's official newspaper, and other posting and distribution in accordance with Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Section 125.66; distribution accompanied by agricultural data statement by those parties required to receive said statement in accordance with the provisions of the New York State Agriculture and Markets Law."
New paragraph five, or the, from the supplemental notes, directs the planning board clerk to cause the posting of the draft G EIS on the town's website, rhinebeck-newyork.gov, and to cause hard copies of the draft G EIS to be available for public review during normal business hours at the town clerk's office, the Star Library, and the Morton Memorial Library. Six, further directs heart throat of Planners East Incorporated and Ray Jerkowski of Morris Associates to complement completeness review heretofore conducted by undertaking detailed technical review of the draft G EIS, and submitting their comments to the planning board prior to the end of the comment period set forth within the above cited notice.
Seven, refers the application for special use permit to the following parties for review and comment: Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development in accordance with the requirements of Section 239 of the General Municipal Code; the Town of Rhinebeck Conservation Advisory Board in accordance with the requirements of Town Code Chapter 125 zoning; the Town of Rhinebeck Waterfront Advisory Committee in accordance with the requirements of Town Code Chapter 118 waterfront consistency review; and the next documents: Notice of Completion of Draft G EIS, Notice of Seeker Hearing, and Notice of Public Hearing on Special Use Permit. Okay, could I hear a motion to approve?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
On point number three, I know a lot of members of the planning board have, have gone to the site already. We're talking about a possible site visit by the public. When would we be thinking about that?
You should, in a project of this magnitude, I would think it would be advisable for the board to actually have, with a project of this magnitude, and with the G EIS in hand, it'd be important to have a site visit. Many of the agencies will be looking probably for that, too.
Probably after the public hearing.
You could, you could do it after the public hearing, you could do it in advance of the public hearing. Obviously, at this time of the year, it's probably a Saturday or Sunday situation that you would, you would schedule.
When would you want to see that done?
I'm sorry?
When would we want to see that done?
I think, I think it would be best to perhaps do it in advance of the hearing. You know, the, the Saturday before, or something of that sort.
Do we have time to schedule, schedule that? I don't know.
Was it, it's November 18th is the public hearing?
Yes, that's the Monday.
And so it's almost a month. I guess the real key here is maybe...
How do you, how do you get the public?
Exactly, how do we inform the public that there is going to be a public hearing on this?
You would do, you would just simply include it as another line in the public notice.
How did we do it when we took the public through the park walk? Remember, we did that walk-through? How did, how did we notify the world on that?
Scheduled it at a meeting.
And we also tried to get ahold of all the different interest groups that we thought might be interested.
I would, I would simply, I would simply add it as a line in the notice that goes to the agencies, as well as a, essentially a line in the official newspaper notice that is going to be published because, because of both the G EIS and the SUP consideration.
So you need to pick a date? I don't want to do that.
Yeah, is the, the Saturday before the, four o'clock or midnight, so?
I don't know what that dates.
He's going to want to clean up and have refreshments?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
It's possible, too, if we contacted like some of the local papers. This is the sort of story that I think they would, you know, pick up on, just a little brief bit about. Yeah. There, you see? No sooner said than done. I think it's a great idea to get people out there and, you know.
We've done that on projects of this magnitude.
And let's set a time.
Yeah, let's set a time and a date.
Let's set a time, like 10:00 o'clock?
10:00, 10:00 on Saturday the 16th?
Do you have any, guess, with the, many people?
Thousands.
You're going to do refreshments?
Pig roast, you know, I heard a pig roast tonight, that would be good.
Is there any reason we can't push that off until after lunch?
Um, that's maybe not a bad point.
What?
Push it off till after lunch, 1:00 maybe.
It'd be a little warmer.
A little warmer, a little drier, if we've had a heavy dew, or snow, or sleet, or ice, or...
I'd also put an upset time on, maybe hours of wine, or...
Yeah, I think...
You do tours? Rock?
One to, one, one to, one to three on Saturday the 16th. Four starts getting, clocks start going the other direction.
Okay.
Yeah.
Marie, if you do that, sort of like a one to three open house kind of thing, is there, as a member of the public, how do I know?
I think the idea is, let's schedule it for 1:00. Let's schedule it for 1:00, show up at 1:00, and it'll take as long as it takes for that group to go through.
I wouldn't put another time.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Because I was confused. People think they can drop it at that time, and then they're wandering the grounds.
So 1:00.
1:00 on Saturday is...
Is when it'll be. Do we need to amend this into the resolution somewhere? No?
I think you do.
Because we have, we actually have the resolution with a motion and a second.
Yeah, add to the resolution on, on number three, which, which site visit will occur on Saturday?
Okay.
So do you need another motion?
Saturday, you need an emotion to amend the...
To amend?
Saturday the 16th, November at...
1:00 PM.
At 1:00 PM.
Well, I made the motion so I...
And put a succinct location where the people are supposed to go to, so they're not wandering all over the...
Made in front of the manor house?
Yeah, just so it's clear.
Okay, could I have a motion to amend the motion?
So, motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we have the motion of the motion, we have the motion. Anyway, discussion. Any other comments, anything else that anyone feels should be popped in here? You guys are okay with this on the 16th, and, okay.
I just have a one stumb question. Joni, this is for you. Mrs. Winnie.
When I'm writing.
Oh, okay.
Glad someone did, I don't think I wrote it down.
Okay, I have it.
Does the town website have the ability to absorb all this information?
I am not 100% positive.
I have a feeling they are tight on space.
Does the town website have the capacity to absorb the summary? Which, I would trust that would be more likely, at least.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
The entire document, I'm not sure. We will do the best we can to put it up, otherwise, it'll just be known that they can call Town Hall and email, or send it to the desk.
Yeah.
Right?
I might offer, I probably, we could probably do a link.
Link to your website.
I could post it on our website, that kind of thing.
Fine, just work that out with Joan.
Yeah, Melody just suggested that.
I was just suggesting that at some point you might want your own website up for this.
Being a bit of a dinosaur, I didn't know you'd have a website. I figured, you know, post office box and...
Well, that way you can update new information.
Well, you want people directed to the town website, and then they can link to you.
Right, perfect.
Maybe a link to the, to GPI.
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect. Any other thoughts by members of the planning board before I call a vote?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. So we'll move this right along.
And John, you will be handling the distribution?
I will definitely coordinate.
Okay, fine. And you'll have to revise notice late tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, because there are a couple of little corrections around it.
I know most of the agencies prefer things on CDs or, like, the packages, but, you know, we'll have hard copies in all of the libraries and the town hall.
Right. The...
Okay, next on the agenda is a, one, a further extension request from CSI Developers. They're entitled to one more six-month extension, and they seem to feel they require it. I'll read you the resolution I have. "In consideration of the letter request of October 1st, 2013 by Patrick Corella, CSI Developer, Developers Holdings 9G LLC for time extension for satisfaction of the conditions and/or requirements set forth in the planning board's resolution of November 19th, 2012 in the matter of special use permits and site plan approval for a proposed 20,000-square-foot commercial building on a 7.706-acre parcel in the former Highway Business Park District. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby extends the deadline for the aforementioned satisfaction of conditions and/or requirements for a period of six calendar months from November 19th, 2013 to May 19th, 2014." And I think it should be noted that this would be the final extension that our current, our zoning law permits us to grant. Could I have a motion to approve?
Hold, hold, hold.
What?
Final extension?
Yeah, this is the second six-month extension.
And so we talked about this, and we have discretion to grant another one, but the second one is totally permissible, it's at our discretion, we could grant three, four, five.
I don't believe that's true.
But the applicant is entitled to.
Oh, he's entitled to two. I don't believe that's true, the way they amended the zoning law a couple of months ago. It was amended so that things would sunset after a period of time.
Yeah, that's right. So this is 18, basically, he's got 18 months, including...
Could I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. Joni will let, let them know that, very good. Okay, zipping right along, the Mench family comes up yet again. Stephen and Pamela Mench, 215 Mill Road subdivision plat, sketch plan conference and initial presentation of application for subdivision plat review and approval in matter of proposed lot alterations totaling 7.32 acres and affecting two parcels in the Rural Agricultural RA-10 district. Planning board review, comment, and processing to the extent timely under Town Code Chapter 101 and seeker. Take it away, Marie.
Good evening. I have provided copies of the lotline alteration map to the planning board, along with application forms, et cetera, and I have wrote one with me, if you'd like me to unroll it, in case you don't have your copy. The idea behind the proposed application for the lotline amendments is that Mr. Mench is selling his property that borders the Landsman Kill stream, and part of the charm of that property is that he has a waterfall, and he has a lot of stream frontage. The idea is that he wants to be able to sell that so that the potential owner can own on both sides of the stream, so that they have control, so they're not worried that someone is going to be building, shed, a barn, a whatever, on the other side of the stream, plus they can walk the other side of the stream and be on their own property, there won't be any, you know, infringements on their, their use of the, of the property. So we've been here before with previous subdivision maps, now we're proposing to take part of the lots that were created and add that to the existing waterfall house property by lotline alteration.
Basically, what had originally happened when they did the subdivision, in order to have frontage on Mill Road, this parcel of land was attached to one of the subdivided parcels going over the Landsman Kill.
Right.
In the intervening years, the parcel that that serves, I believe is Jonathan's, I believe, is now served by a private road, and not requiring that crossing of the Landsman Kill. DEC, certainly with some other things we've dealt with, if you have an alternative to crossing one of their streams, they make you do it. And the fact that there is a pre, an existing access to this property now, and that's where Jonathan lives, I don't know even know if DC would give you a permit to cross over the Landsman Kill, and certainly it's something we prefer not to see happen, I would think.
I agree.
So that's basically the genesis of this, of this project, of this proposal.
And the only building that was of concern with setback issues, we did locate and showed it on the map, so that we show that we maintain at least a 100-foot minimum setback from that structure. It's not a dwelling, it's a pool and concrete and wood building, and we made sure that we were, you know, we didn't infringe upon the yard for that building. Everything else is so far away from the property lines, we didn't feel it was necessary to locate them.
Any questions for me? Okay, I have a resolution to read.
There are a couple of procedural items, Michael. One is, it's acknowledged that the site's in the LWRA, therefore coastal assessment forms required. Secondly, and I did not check this, but point's been raised as to whether the site's also within the landmarks district. I believe it is, and if that's the case, then it's a type one.
We did submit it, long we had.
Okay. Fine, it's one of those things, okay, it's one of those things that got lost because of the computer error, the computer problems in Town Hall. Okay, fine, fine.
Yeah, we did have that.
Okay, so, so, Michael, in the resolution, the, simply, the drawing title needs to be inserted, title and the date, first paragraph stands, and in the second paragraph, obviously, classifies as a type one, but the planning board is the only involved agency, you know.
Okay, yes. Okay, I think we can do this. All righty. "The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows on the September 25th, 2013 application by Stephen and Pamela Mench for subdivision plat approval, review, and approval in matter of proposed lotline alterations totaling 7.32 acres and affecting two parcels in the Rural Agricultural RA-10 district, the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, and the local waterfront revitalization area, all as depicted on a survey map entitled, and we'll get that from you, prepared by Mary T. Welch, LS, and dated, and we'll get that as well, 2013, and otherwise described in the application and supporting data, including site resource analysis assessment, agricultural data statement, and full EAF Part 1 certified by Ms. Welch. One, accepts the application and supporting data as adequate for commencing planning board consultant and public review contingent upon the applicant's submission of the completed coastal assessment form not later than October 28th, 2013. Classifies the proposed action as described in the application as a type-one action for which the planning board is the only involved agency, and thus the secret lead agency, and for which coordinated environmental quality review is not..."
No, that's it.
Okay, that's it. Three, delegates planning board members, who wants to go down to the waterside?
Richard.
Richard? Who else wants to go down to the waterside?
Bob?
Okay. Richard and Bob. Two, conduct a field visit to the project site and report their observations at the time of public hearing. Refers the application to the Town Conservation Advisory Board for review and comment. Refers the application to the Waterfront Advisory Committee for review and comment concerning pertinent coastal policy set forth in the town's LWRP. Such referral to occur upon receipt of the coastal assessment form. Directs the clerk to circulate the agricultural data statement in accordance with the requirements of the New York State Agriculture and Markets Law. Schedules a public hearing for Monday, November 18th at, we have one at 6:35 already?
6:40 here.
6:40. And directs the clerk to provide or otherwise cause notice and posting thereof pursuant to the requirements set forth within Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land, with such notice to be withheld if the coastal assessment form is not received, is received, is...
Is, is...
If it's not received by the 28th.
Is not received by, yeah.
Eight, without prejudice of the planning board's consideration of any input received prior to or at the public hearing, authorizes the planning consultant to prepare working drafts of an EAF Part 2 negative declaration under seeker, and a draft seeker resolution and draft additional approval resolution for review and consideration by the board when timely and if deemed appropriate. Could I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Okay. And get in touch with Bob and Richard about the site visit, Marie.
I'm going to call.
Okay. Next up on the skit, hello.
You want to do that?
I have a project that has a proposed lotline alteration. It's a way that divided by a county.
Oh.
He's reading the G EIS.
Yeah, cool. Yeah, I wasn't there. I was down by the river.[1791.32] Actually, I was down by the river having fun. Thanks, Marie. Okay, next. John Imperato, Hilltop Road subdivision platte. Sketch plan conference in the matter of proposed lot line alteration between lands of John Imperato and lands of Frank and Kathleen Rubusco and subsequent subdivision of lands of Imperato into 5.987-acre and 92.113-acre parcels in rural countryside district, planning board review, comment and processing to the extent timely under Town Code Chapter 101 and Seeker. Take it away.
Thank you. I had a meeting with Mike and the board turning the set guideline and trying out the best way to subdivide a piece of land. As Matt showed, 98.6 acres, I want to take a little less than six acres, make a lot. I didn't have enough road footage, so the best way to do it is to have the Rubuscos do a land swap. As you can see on the map, they're equal parts of land. Rubuscos gave them a piece on the east side, so it's east of the northern property. So I've had my mandatory, it was 40-foot right away and it wouldn't affect the other entrance to the property of the main lot, which will still stay intact. So I only have a new entrance when you come up by Hilltop Road in front of Rubuscos.
But the problem was, was that the property, basically Hilltop Road terminates at the properties that currently exist. And so it's very difficult without putting in a private road or something or doing a something, what is that called?
Open development area.
Thank you, open development area, to even cut off a small lot for building in the five-acre zone. So in the discussion, what we had is it seems if the neighbor was willing to give him the necessary land off the side of his property and then just a land swap, then the necessary property, road footage could be acquired without having to do anything with the main piece of property and that can just stay the way it is and permit Mr. Imperato to build a house on the other property. And it seems to work well for both of the neighbors in terms of the property being swapped. So that's basically what this is all about. Any questions?
No, I remember when he came the first time, he walked out of here a very sad human being.
Well, I recall there'd been a bunch of other things done that shouldn't have been done and it was rather confusing, to say the least. Okay, well, I have a resolution here.
The only question there, Michael, with respect to the resolution is whether or not this property is within or adjacent to an ag district.
It might be, just because of LeBowski land and things like that, I'm not sure.
I think it may be, so I'd adopt the resolution as if it is and require that a
Ag data statement.
Ag data statement be submitted. It's a five-minute exercise to complete it and it covers.
I think Joni has copies of the form, yeah. I think it is, because I know there's, you know, the Botski and all the other stuff out there.
There's a note on the plan that says that it's within 500 feet.
Does that border, does that get, does that property have to be within?
500 feet.
Yeah, I don't think, I will check that. It's not within 500 feet, I will get the board to check it.
Okay.
Adopt the resolution in that form, you know, with the italicized language.
And if we don't, and if we don't need it, then we don't need it.
Yeah, you get yourself covered.
Right. The Town of Ryman Planning Board hereby access follows on the September 26th, 2013 application by John Imperato for sketch plan review and subdivision platte approval under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land to authorize a landline alteration between the lands of John Imperato and the lands of Frank and Kathleen Rubusco, Rubusco, on Hilltop Road in the rural agricultural RA-10 district, rural agricultural, I believe it's the five acre.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's not real.
The five acre.
It's rural countryside, then.
Right, RC5.
That's right, it better be, because the lots are less than 10.
District and the subsequent creation of Mr. Imperato of a 5.987-acre residential building lot and a 92.113-acre remaining lands parcel, all is depicted on a surveyor's map entitled Minor Subdivision and Lot Line Realignment of Lands of Imperato and Rubusco, prepared by Robert L. Campbell, LS, and dated October 1st, 2009, revised to August 9th, 2013, and otherwise described in a short EAF zoning compliance determination and other supporting documentation. A, endorses the sketch plan and classifies the proposed subdivision as a minor subdivision under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land. B, accepts the application for review and approval of minor subdivision platte as adequate for planning board consultant and public review, subject to preparation and submission within the next five days of an agricultural data statement. And Joni can help you get that all together. Classifies the proposed action as described in the application as an unlisted action under Seeker for which coordinated and environmental quality review is not required and will not be conducted. Delegates planning board members, well, I'll go to this one since it's around the corner. Anyone want to go with me? Melody? To conduct a field visit to the subdivision site and report their observations at the time of public hearing. E, refers the application to the Town Conservation Advisory Board for review and comment. F, schedules a public hearing on the application for Monday, November 18th?
18th at 6:45.
And directs the clerk to provide or otherwise cause notice and posting thereof pursuant to the requirements set forth within Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land. And Joni can help you with that, too. Further directs the clerk to distribute the agriculture data statement as required under New York State Agriculture Markets Law, assuming indeed it is required. Oh, do we, don't we also get, okay. Advises the applicant the draft of consolidation or merger deeds as will be required for recording the Dutchess County Clerk's Office upon filing of the subdivision platte if approved should be prepared and submitted to the Planning Board for review as to its sufficiency. I, due to the limited nature of the matter of subject of this application, including the absence of any proposed development and without prejudice to the Planning Board's consideration of any input received prior to or at the public hearing, authorizes the planning consultant to prepare working drafts of an EAF Part Two negative declaration under Seeker and conditional approval resolution for review and consideration by the board when and if timely. Could I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Very good. Thank you. Hello.
Where's Mark? Yeah, where's Mark?
Yeah, I don't see Mark either. Okay, I believe we can do that. I believe we can do that. Okay, next on the agenda, Dutchess County Agriculture Society, Inc., New York State Route 9 North Site Plan Sketch Plan Conference in the matter of proposed construction of a new main entrance to the fairgrounds at a location near the northerly property boundary along New York State Route 9 in the Gateway North District, Planning Board Review and Comment.
Can I make this statement?
Yes.
I would like to disclose that I am a member of the Agricultural Society. I am not a member of the Board of Directors, so I have no position involving policymaking and no position involving any of the finances. I don't feel there's a need for me to recuse myself. I did, however, did want to disclose the relationship.
Okay, and I know Mark was the engineer, is the engineer working with you on this?
Yes, he just texted me and said that he is on his way because he told me to meet him here and he has all the paperwork.
Okay.
All maps, all pictures, the whole nine yards.
We have some, we have maps.
We have maps.
David, see you already?
Yeah, if you want to, you want to put one up and we'll jump in.
Thank you, Melody.
You can't handle his other item on the agenda now. He's got the next two items.
If I can open them, I'll share.
Hey, what's he doing good here? We're doing good.
Okay, shake it.
Certainly need a cup of coffee. What we're trying to accomplish here is alleviate some of the stress on Route 9 that comes from large events that we do. And as you know, for years, what we'll call for this conversation, the south gate, has been the entrance to the fairgrounds to let people in. And for the last two years, we've been trying a program where we use the north gate to enter people and the reason being that every time we entered down here and you parked people on the north side of the entrance, we'd have to stop inbound traffic to let pedestrians cross the street. And it slowed entrance down and blocked lined up cars on Route 9. So the logic here was to come in the north gate, pull all the cars to the south and work your way backwards so that when you get out of your car, the next car parks behind you and we don't have that problem. It does create that problem on the exit, but at that point, we really don't care because they're inside, they're not on the road. So it's not creating a big traffic jam. They're kind of unhappy when they're sitting there at the end of the day, but that's the brakes. So what we're proposing here is to make the north entrance a permanent entrance and it needs to be wider than it currently is to accommodate all of that stuff. We have met with DOT and they obviously would like it curbed and we did manable curb as well in case we're going to have a big delivery of something that's going to have to make it. But Mark is proposing in this drawing, four lanes of traffic coming in here and the reason being that we can stage all of those cars once they get in as they're coming in. We have the black top roads in there ready to accommodate that. So it just kind of made sense and two years ago, the mayor made it very clear that he not wanted, no longer wanted us to have deliveries come on Village Streets with his three-ton weight limits. So it's become difficult to have deliveries during the day when you've got fair traffic. Now I've got tractor trailer drivers stuck in traffic for two hours trying to make a delivery. So I would also like to include as part of this, there would be a service lane in this so that truck traffic and livestock vehicles, et cetera, would not get stuck in the afternoon traffic and would be able to make their way into the fairgrounds. So that's what this is about. Mark has measured all of this with DOT's help. They have looked at the bridge that is just north of this entrance at the moment because naturally the road is not wide enough there. What we're proposing here is about a 500-foot-long, I believe, northbound right turn lane and whatever we can get on this, on the southbound side because of the bridge. And I, Mark needs to explain that better than I do, but that's the gist of what we're trying to do here. There would be a through lane, a left-hand turn lane, a through lane going north and a right-hand turn lane. And everything would dump in and that's the way we would go. The other little fly-in element that came last week when DOT met with us for the second time was they're, they're fine with this at this point, except now they want the south gate half-closed off and they want it curbed. And they want the Mulberry Street at the Florist, they want that also necked down to a very small intersection. The Mulberry Street Road in front of the Florist shop belongs to the fairgrounds, that is, that's our road. But as you know, right now it's a Y, it's a very wide intersection and I don't think there's been a lot of horrendous accidents there, but they want it addressed. They would like the flower bed in the center gone, they would like the south side of that dug up and grassed and they want a T-intersection there. They want it all curbed. We met this past Tuesday with the state police and the sheriff's office to get ready for sheep and wool and they all looked at the plan and when we told them what DOT wanted, they were very unhappy because they're worried about emergency service vehicles entering and God forbid a horrific event here getting people off the grounds. Hi, Mark.
You're late.
Step right in. We, I understand both sides. Mike Temple, the engineer at DOT, wants to treat us like a commercial business, which we are, but we're not like a normal commercial business. I mean, you think commercial business, just take a stop and shop, you got 200, 300 cars. This weekend, I probably had 8,000 cars. If you've got to get all of those out of there in a hurry, state police and the sheriff's office were concerned about the curbs and necking everything down that narrow. So I think there's going to be more conversation here with all the players together to...
Those are in the village, that?
Yeah, on the good side, exactly. On the good side, we don't have to consider any of that because it's in the village.
And even, even here, yes, the line kind of goes in the middle of it, so depending on the side we're on.
Yeah, but, but the side, but they want it half closed down, so that, exactly. So we're good with that.
You're here first.
Yeah. So...
So we're in the planning stages here and I think there's, obviously there's more for us to investigate and make sure. One thing that we do not want to do, I don't want to do this project and five years from now find out we should have done this or we should have done that. We want to make sure that it's good for the next 20 or 25, or at least until I'm retired. I don't care. So I kind of, where we're at here.
Just, you know, if, if the, ultimately we go with, or the fairgrounds goes with the new entrance to the north, there are some considerations, you know, with application to this board and I just wanted to go over, like procedurally, what, you know, to do is, like for example, you know, directly across the street adjacent to Bill Downs' property, there's, your state to EC wetland there. So obviously we're not in the wetland, but we're close, we're in the adjacent area. That's number one. There is, to the, to the north of us, there's core wetland there, so we're in that, we're in the adjacent area there. Also, you know, what through this proposal was, you know, an extension or an enlargement of, you know, the driveway to the east and so there, right now there's an existing roadway there with a culvert and a stream, seasonal stream that dumps into the, you know, dumps into the parcels of north. Also would require extension of that, extension of those culverts and also, you know, included with a wetland application. So I just envisioned this as a, you know, an application for site plan, also a wetlands application and is there anything else that I'm missing?
Question I would have is, and, excuse me, you talked about an entry lane coming out of the village right-hand, northbound. Is that going to be an additional lane that's not there at this time? In other words, expansion of the shoulder, is it going to be on your property or is it going to be on state property?
Yeah, state property, it's the expansion of the shoulder, so it's between, it's where the shoulder is, you know, extension of the shoulder and, you know, before the trees.
Yeah.
We were able, you know, we don't do a simple, awesome job on the trees either.
Oh, you got to do it this way if you're going to do it for them.
And so our property line is right about that fence line. So it's in, it's in, it's in the state roadway that.
Okay. So the state, that's the state's road, state's responsibility to maintain it. How much of it do you, do they pay for to construct it? Is that their bill?
No, your bill.
That's pretty funny, Mitch.
You got to pay for everything, but it's all done by state employees, trucks?
I have to pay for all of the improvement that's going to be done. The only thing they're going to do would be allow it to salt it in the wintertime. Otherwise, it's my dime.
Yep.
That's prevailing wage.
Yep.
And, you know, that's a question I ask and they tell me no.
Really? Not really.
DOT engineer told me no because...
It's not their project.
I'm private.
It's your project.
So in essence...
It's not a...
In essence, he's doing the road and dedicating it to the state.
Have the work done?
Yes.
Or just the state?
I do.
Oh, okay.
It's sort of like he's putting in a road and then he dedicates it to the state.
No different than the, than the shopping center or whatever.
But a lot easier?
Right. And would also be the same on the, on the west side.
Entry lane.
Just a consideration for the traffic going to the south also. It's the same, it's all...
How does the service road work? You said there's going to be an additional service road just for large trucks coming and going, but they still have to get out with traffic?
Well, that would be inside the ground. So in other words, they'd be on the state highway, when they turn into the fairgrounds proper, there would be, the left-hand lane is what I'm envisioning, would be for truck traffic only. And that's just so that they don't get stuck in the rest of the fair traffic as they get parked. We have tried the last two years to get all of our deliveries by 9:30 a.m. and it's worked to some extent. But on those big days, we still need deliveries at the end of the day because we don't have enough food to get through. So, you know, trucks have to come tween like 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. to make an additional delivery.
You won't use all these lanes to bring in all one-way traffic and let them exit, another exit?
That's what the deal is here at this point. All of these would come in and the first two would peel off and come on the first road and the next two would go around on the other side of the stream and they all filter down. So, you know, we can stack a lot of cars in here that we can't stack on Route 9. So it seems to make sense for us and we've proven this past weekend, it worked, except for Saturday when you just can't explain that phenomenon, what happens on a Saturday of sheep and wool, it's just a...
It was astounding. I got caught at 9:00 in the morning all the way up at the bridge trying to come back from, from Germany.
I will say that we have, on many occasions, had conversations with DOT about the right-hand turn lane at the 9 and 9G light, that he has an arrow but doesn't have a lane to use.
Oh, right, doesn't.
And that would solve a lot of problems as well, but I'm not paying for that.
It's the same engineering people that gave us the thing down at the Poughkeepsie Bridge.
Oh, please.
If we say more.
Last two weekends, they've been amazing.
So I'm assuming, and our, this is, it's, this is considered under our zoning law, a non-conforming use, legal non-conforming use, so we don't have any issues there. And it's just, uh, so basically, I think it would just be the site plan and the wetland permit.
I think Mark has hit it exactly, it's site plan and wetlands, and obviously, the, uh, the real control here is, uh, DOT and the access, in the, uh, design approval and, uh, issuance of the work permit. But that's, that's all it amounts to.
What do they want you to do with the current, the old main entrance?
The south gate, yes. As you know, the cow sign is in the center. They want one-half of that, our choice, which one. They want the blacktop taken up and basically grassed or closed off, because they say, um, I think Mike's terms were, "It's confusing to motorists where they're supposed to drive." So, you know, it's fifty feet, roughly, each side of the cow sign to the current, the current curb. So there's a hundred feet of opening there.
But where will you put the Christmas decorations?
Always good to get to the important points. Absolutely, get to the important points.
Glad you got your priorities in the right order, kid.
Yep. Yeah, it seems, you've pretty well nailed it, Mark, what's, what we're gonna require, and I think, as Art said, it's really DOT's sort of ballgame.
And with respect to, uh, some portion, I guess, of the, the cent, what I'll call the central location, central gate, and the southern, uh, Mulberry, uh, it's, that's one of the, can we go talk to the village?
Right.
As required.
Right, so, so I don't know if Andy did you mention that, we're trying to coordinate with DOT as...
Right, right.
Does this board wanna be involved?
It seems you might lead that way, I think we're going either south or north.
Can you satisfy the, or work towards satisfying the state if you were somehow temporarily fencing those sections they'd like to reduce, so that in case of an emergency, you could reopen them?
Um, we talked about, especially at the south gate there, whichever side we pick, maybe doing a portable flower pots that we would move to the forklift in case of emergency, just move to the side, that, so that they could use it. Um, but I think it's a conversation that county emergency management is willing to have with DOT, along with the state police and sheriff's office. That is their major concern. They wanna be able, in an emergency, to get people out as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
Uh, and I don't know if DOT doesn't think that way, but the comment was made the other day, the ladder truck that has to service the Ferris wheel, God forbid it gets stuck at the top, comes in the Mulberry Street entrance. And if, if they neck that down and put curbs on it, he's not gonna be able to get that engine in here. So, um, that's one of the concerns that those guys have. It needs to be discussed.
Wait a second, DOT has no responsibility for the Mulberry Street?
Well, it's access on the highway.
State highway.
What do they do, what do you do for the helipad right now?
You're talking about nine entrances of Mulberry Street, not the off...
What's the procedure right now, in the middle of a Saturday afternoon wolffest, when they have to land someone for medical, fly somebody a helipad?
The helipad is out of service on weekends that we are open.
Oh.
And the fire department automatically calls county and says, "We're out of service this weekend, back in service, uh, eight o'clock Monday morning," otherwise, so they go to the high school. That's the way it always works.
Didn't know that.
Hmm, cool.
Standing, standing protocol for that.
Yeah, I think you've pretty well got it nailed for this one. I mean, you know, I think it'd be very nice to have, you know, the different law enforcement agencies and emergency management, the fire department, talk to DOT, and say, you know, "What's wrong with you people?"
So then, once we get that sorted away, depending on...
Right. Get your application, you know, those two applications, and we should be ready to go.
Okay.
Yeah, shouldn't, I don't see a problem.
They've done a nice job.
Yeah.
All right, great.
By the way, the temporary setup that you've been using for the last two years, I think it's worked out from a, from a local person's perspective, it's worked out well.
I hope so.
It's a little news, getting used to going past the main entrance, but...
The entrance, yes. It's a little disconcerting of people, especially, you know, get trained, and they're used to this is what we're gonna do, and now, you throw them the curveball, and they get all upset.
It's so much better than it was.
We think it's worked, so it makes sense to take the next step and, and make the north gate the entrance.
Make it farm, yeah. I, I concur with it.
Yeah. Good deal.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. So now that we have Mark here...
Rhinebeck Ford.
Rhinebeck Ford.
I'm sorry, I have to excuse myself.
Okay. Richard, take care. Uh, Rhinebeck Ford, Route 9 South, uh, Route 9 G North, New York State Route 9 G North, gotta wait, need to fly. Site plan. As stated, uh, wait a minute, where did I mine? Oh, wrong thing, cancel that, Rhinebeck...
Sketch plan conference.
It's sketch plan conference on, uh, building design to redo their building.
Yes, not only, uh, okay. All right, so, don't get me started. You know, I didn't, I didn't, you know, I just had a copy of the old site plan, so I, you need something to look at.
This is the existing site plan?
Yeah, this is, well...
I have this.
Yeah, that's nice. And I just have larger copies of what was previously, you know, what we previously talked about, minus all the site changes to it. Just giving you a larger plan.
Than what I have in here?
Yeah.
Okay.
This still applies.
Oh, this still, okay.
This still applies.
We can look at it.
But this is...
Rumba!
There's a lot of microphones under these things.
So as far as the impervious surfaces, this is what currently exists?
That's what exists, and what is being, and so, what, what, uh, an application to be made to this board would be for only building changes.
Those two additions.
No changes to the site, only for building changes.
Two additions, and then trying to sort of make the building look different.
Right, right, exactly.
Yeah.
But in, in doing that, after I had, uh, uh, you know, provided the board this material for discussion for tonight, I also remembered that there was, you know, the previous area various applications that were, you know, submitted for Rhinebeck Ford coverage, right? Because there were, there were some, there were some coverage issues. And so, wasn't quite sure how this would be handled now with, um, you know, I mean, the, the building area is getting larger, but the impervious area is...
Staying the same.
Is staying the same.
Because that's already paved there, isn't it?
Right, it's already paved. And so, whether or not, you know, because the previous application, we were, along with the site plan, there was lot line alteration, that was being discussed in order to bring it into compliance, uh, with zoning code for coverage. But essentially here, if the, uh, if the buildings are just, um...
Well, you're exchanging one impervious surface for another, that's all.
Right, so that, it should be, it should dead out.
I would think so, yeah. It's no, no additional impervious surface, so...
You weren't, you weren't exceeding a building coverage standard, you were exceeding a lot coverage standard, which included any impervious.
Right.
Right. So it's a substitute.
As we now know, that all parking lots are actually structures in there.
Yes. Yes, we do.
Richard's still talking to me, so it's okay.
Is he?
Oh, yeah. It's okay.
So, uh, so then, anyway, then, so what I was hopeful tonight is, uh, you know, just some discussion with the board about, you know, provided what Rhinebeck Ford, uh, proposed, and, um, the reason for this, I guess, is there, there change in the path of, in the application, and apparently, uh, Ford Motor Company is, is now involved, so then Rhinebeck Ford gets, uh, you know, some benefit. Our architectural changes and building modifications with the assistance of, of Ford Motor Company.
This is kind of what we're looking at tonight, this one right here. And I guess in the interest of full disclosure, we had a discussion with Mark, I think Melody and I did, a while ago, and took a look at this and said, "Absolutely not." But, before Ford Motor Company would accept, "Absolutely not," it has to come before the planning board, you can all tell them, "Absolutely not if you so feel," that this doesn't meet our design guidelines, it doesn't meet any of the sort of parameters that we expect of a commercial establishment in the town of Rhinebeck being the design guideline. So that's why Mark is here tonight for this.
Right. And so then, you know, the effort, and certainly not to waste it before its time, Michael, you know, summarized it best, but, you know, to, to get formal comments back from the board, is it, you know, is a formal application, uh, required? I think Ford Motor Company, I, I need to go back with some, you know...
I think, we think of this as a sketch plan, basically, and it basically, you don't have a formal application, you're just sort of giving some ideas to us, and we're digesting, and then giving you back your ideas in a format that you can take to Ford Motor Company.
Right, but to get written comments back from this board, to...
We can, have to be written comments, or are the minutes sufficient?
Hmm?
Does it have to be written comments, or are the minutes sufficient?
The minutes would be sufficient, right.
Yeah. I think the points we would wanna make, I would think, is that, you know, the proposed building alterations, as, as presented to us tonight, do not meet the design guidelines, even to the minimum, of what the town, you know, requires of applicants for commercial properties in the town. And therefore, you know, we expect the building, uh, design to reflect the design guidelines that we do have in our zoning law that are available, and, um, we expect all commercial applications to employ those guidelines, and then come before us once again for another sketch plan conference. Maybe have to jiggle around a little bit with them, but then try and develop something that is appropriate to our community.
Well, I would, I would also add to that, that if my memory serves me correctly, in prior times before us, there was already a rather well-developed proposal by Warren Temple Smith...
That's correct.
For, and redesign of the exterior that at the time was somewhat favorably received, or at least was a much more positive place to start. So my recommendation would be that, you know, that type of design is more in keeping with what we're looking for, and I would encourage you to share that with Ford Motor Company as something that is, you know, has the potential to be acceptable.
And the Subaru, Rudi Subaru in the village, the design they did for their showroom.
I, I took them there.
Yeah, that would be...
We, we could be recommending that you show them other examples of successful applications, such as Rudi's, and the minutes could reflect that.
Yeah.
There, there's another thing, too, if you go back to your previous approaches, one of the things we were talking about is safety factors with trucks unloading and stuff like that, uh, on a site basis, okay? And that was factored into getting the tractor-trailer from unloading cars in the middle of nine G, my words, uh, to the private part, and, and it doesn't address it at all. You still have that problem, it's still there, unless they're unloading them somewhere and driving them to the scene.
No, no, I drove by the other day.
Let me unload it, here, yeah.
It also seems every time I drive by there, they're further and further onto the grassy area.
Okay.
The show, the car, the, the...
The car, you know, they're not on the pavement, they're creeping onto the lawn there, and...
You do have the limitation of that water body that runs down through this thing.
Right.
You know, that's, that was the biggest bone of contention the last time we went through this, plus probably the finances at the time, but, uh, yeah, so there's no discussion about the safety that probably should be looked at from a site perspective.
Okay.
Okay? Just giving you words to carry on back...
So then, you're, you're, you know, you know, the application would also, I guess it would involve some site, site changes, or consideration of, as, as we did before, you know, single formative ingress and egress, uh, taking out that, uh, southerly, we'll say the southerly...
Whatever the proposal was, I forgot what it was.
And remove the, remove the southerly, this, this one was removed, and it was just sink, it was just a, you know, single access.
Yeah.
Lot more landscaping, as I recall.
Didn't, didn't we have a signage discussion as well, when they orig, when you came before us the first time?
I don't think we got that far.
I don't think we did either. Sorry. Well, not really, but...
Aren't you glad you, see, you're looking, you came late, right?
But...
So, does that give you direction?
Well, um, so then, is it, so then, if, if, it does direction for, as far as the building, uh, changes, but with regard to materials to be submitted, uh, so you're suggesting to keep, you know, like, come back for sketching, sketching, yeah?
Right, right, right.
And then ultimately, if there's, if we, if the applicant has something satisfactory to this board, then it's a formal site plan application?
Yes, yes.
And would that fully include, uh, you know, application for the, the building facade changes, or would it include other items?
Well, it depends on what else you might wanna factor into that. We could discuss that at the sketch plan, if there are other things that you wanted to have us discuss, as long as it did not include, increase the impervious surface.
Right, and so then, but would, like, I guess landscaping, lighting, signage?
Absolutely.
Does that, uh, you know, are those all...
Those are all site, well, the landscaping is signage, um, usually, it's often a separate permit, you know, a sign, sign permit. Although with the design phase for site plan, as long as you're staying, you may still have to apply for a site, a sign permit, but since it is part of the design of the building, you know how much you can put on linear feet based upon your...
Right, exactly.
Things like that. Would be something you'd wanna work out, too, probably how the signs are gonna look, what they're gonna be made out of, you know, how they're gonna be lit, things of that sort, because all those do come under site plan.
So, moving back, I think, all these, this is lighting on the site, and now it's , uh, these landscaping on the site, and any requirement for modification, or can it strictly change the building?
Those existing non-compliant conditions, then, they have a right to maintain those.
Right.
You could, you can volunteer changes.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, but to the extent that you're not removing, let's say, removing the lighting, then, uh, you're, you're non-compliant existing.
What about...
Uh, signage you have to include, uh, as part of the submission, if it in fact is integral to the building facade.
And it will be.
And it will be, so it's, so signage is, in this case, signage would not be put off to a, to a separate.
Right.
Okay.
Now, what about, uh, if, if they come in with a new site plan, and this is obviously, assuming that this is what they wanna do, we had a big issue with where the vehicles and how the vehicles were parked on the property. Does that application have to address that, or can they use it as-is, as long as they don't go near it? I don't know.
That's always been a question I've had, too. If you're coming in for a site plan approval, making alterations, don't the other elements of the site plan be brought into conformity with current law, like the lighting regulations? No?
Have you had, any, any, uh, um, illegalities on the site need to be corrected, but you don't have to come into compliance, uh, fully, uh, with every element.
Well, what would be illegal, like, say, lights that are shining out?
If they were, they were parking on the DOT right-of-way, as a, for instance. I'm not saying that they are, but, you know, as a, for instance. Or if there was a previously approved site plan, uh, that showed parking, uh, setback X, X number of feet, and they're not abiding to that site plan, that would be...
A violation.
Would be, would be a violation.
But that would be a violation to be, to be remedied, rather than a site plan change.
What, I'm sorry, is this...
But that would be a violation to be addressed, rather than a site plan.
Yeah, but if there's an existing violation, then you can't, the planning board...
Right, we can't, we can't...
Can't proceed, right.
Right.
And then, as far as there are, or...
I don't believe there are, no.
No. As long as they're not parking on the grass.
Okay.
No, it's...
Okay.
So, so no, you can't do this.
Yeah.
Not helpful?
Sure.
And we can get the minutes, and if, if necessary, you know, we add, add the minutes and embellish, you know, add more to it, and just, if we need to, so that we can have what we need for Ford. for Ford.
Chris can have some comment?
I have a question about the signs that are, you know, on the property. Is that a conforming, existing condition, or are new signs that are added?
The existing signs would be part of the nonconforming, and they may have even been conforming when the site plan was originally approved, I don't know. So they may have been legal at that time when the dealership first went in and put these signs up, so they would be...
There's no new signs that have been put up, right? That's, I guess, like, what you...
I don't, that I don't know.
Yeah, that's, I get involved, and since the site applications, we were bound for a few years, you know, I have to, I'll verify that. I was looking at this big hall for...
That's been there.
Yeah.
That was been there, yeah, that sign is, yeah.
So it's been there.
Yeah.
I guess one question is total signage, footage of signage, that would be factored into it.
That, that does get factored in.
Which could limit the signage on the building, facade.
It may well, it may well be that because of the amount of existing signage that they don't have any, any budget left over for signage on the building.
Unless they voluntarily reduce.
At which point, then, they're forced into making decisions.
Correct.
Forced into making choices as to what they keep and what they don't.
Okay, so, uh...
If they want to revise the landscaping, then yes, we would need a new landscaping plan, certainly, and that could certainly be part, obviously, part of the site plan.
Same with the lighting.
Same with the lighting, if they wish to do that.
Okay. Great.
Thanks, Melody.
Mark has 55 pounds of it out in my car for you if you want to take it.
And he, never mind, we'll just move along now.
There's more stories.
Thanks, Melody. Oh, any word on, I guess we, oh, should we...
Could you make any progress?
Well, I actually, I hope that we're...
Von Viti.
Von Viti, so, I'm hopeful.
Okay.
Good.
Good.
So some progress.
Yeah.
Good, good.
No, good luck.
You got it.
CB.
Okay, we have two items left. These are ZBA referrals.
Not next month, right?
No.
Okay, that's all we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Okay.
The first one is Teresa Link, 99 Salisbury Turnpike, area variance, application for reduction in required side yard setback from minimum 50 feet to 43 feet in rural countryside RC5 district.
Sounds pretty straightforward.
Doesn't seem to be an issue, I mean, that seems to be fairly minimal.
You've got, there's something in the, in the notes, page 15, there's a...
Yep, it's, it's another case of the RC5 district was the three acre district, and so everyone became nonconforming, and, you know, so...
And this is not, it's not a major variance in terms of the, the change.
Right. So let me just, we have a, we have a, we have a resolution here. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board has reviewed upon referral the application for area variance submitted by Teresa Link and finds the requested variance to authorize reduced front setback to raise no significant planning, zoning, or environmental issues in the context of the existing pattern of residential development in the RC5 district. Planning Board understands there to be the presence of practical difficulty cited in the application and recommends the ZBA rely upon its own study of the facts and decide this application in accordance with the criteria and procedure set forth at Town Coach Chapter 125, Sections 125, 124C and D. Could I have a motion to approve?
So motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our final business item for tonight, Darren Page, 20 Hutton Street, area variance, application for increase in maximum gross floor area from 2,300 square feet to 5,814 square feet, and reduction in side yard setback from minimum 50 feet to 19.58 feet in the residential low density RL5 and Rhine Cliff Overlay Districts.
My notes on this, I think, just to point out to the board, indicate that obviously a, an increase in maximum floor area from 2,300 square feet to 5,814, and a reduction in side setback from 50 feet to 19 feet are both large variances. There's a substantial magnitude associated with each of those variances. And secondly, there's a visually and environmentally sensitive location that's recognized in the Rhine Cliff overlay designation that needs to be considered by the, by the board in making any recommendation here to the ZBA. Beyond that, I'm just pointing out that, that background with respect to this particular application, this is clearly not what we would consider in any, any sense a, a de minimis variance, which are, which are variances that are in that 10 to maybe 25 percent magnitude. This is, this is very, very large, large variance, a very large departure from the RCO zoning requirements.
And in my own personal view, it significantly overturns the entire intent of the Rhine Cliff Overlay District, which is to try and maintain the cohesive nature of Rhine Cliff, the small lots, the smaller houses, the whole historic development of the hamlet. It's in probably one of the most heavily noticed areas, scenic, state scenic designations, RLWRP, landmark district, I mean, there's just about no designation that this area could have that Rhine Cliff, this area of Rhine Cliff doesn't have.
Would the CAB be asked to comment?
They have been on the consistency, and they are totally opposed to it.
Okay.
Totally inconsistent. And I frankly, I realize that perhaps some people feel that decisions by the ZBA don't set precedents, I believe they do, and I believe it establishes a precedent if one were to permit this level of variance, I don't see how you could say no to anyone else. I really don't. Rhine Cliff is unique, it has a very unique character, a unique, a unique structure to it, and this clearly is not fitting in with Rhine Cliff. The house on the lot already is quite large, there are apparently potentially some other issues in terms of drainage, stormwater drainage, things like that for other, for neighbors. I, when I saw this particular one come forward, I, I don't know.
What's the largest, what's the largest square footage house in, in Rhine Cliff right now, do you know?
I don't know, this may be one of them already.
Yeah.
May well be one of them already.
Correct.
I believe it already is in excess of 2,300 square feet. I, my own feeling, what I would like to see the planning board recommend is that under no circumstances can the zoning board of appeals, given the facts involved, given the area, given the zoning, the very, the care that this area of Rhine Beck was given in our new zoning law, should grant either of these two variances. This is the sort of structure, the sort of house that simply does not belong in the Rhine Cliff Overlay District. There are plenty of areas in the town where you can build houses of this magnitude. The whole intent of the Rhine Cliff Overlay District was to prevent this sort of thing from happening, to preserve the hamlet. That's just my feeling.
I'll take a little bit of a different view. I did the site review when we had it, the last, when he came before us before, and one of the things, in my opinion, you can't see the house.
Yeah.
You can stand on the road and look up there from Rhine Cliff, and you can't see the house now.
I think only the one there.
So it's not a visual impact from my perspective. Plus behind him is all empty land that's non-buildable, okay, as I recall.
He's pushing everything to the front of the house anyways, like two towers.
Is it, is it visual impact from the river?
I don't even know if you can see it, maybe, but, you know.
Because that's a consideration.
I get concerned about the sanctity of Rhine Cliff. When I see all these people, and I see that Hollywood House built on, or the South Beach House built on Morton Road, and I see that across from the railroad station is modern thing that built up, and everybody's complaining about it, so, you know, I'm not a great fan of restricting stuff like that. I mean, the houses, as it is up there now, is, is, is nice. I assume he's going to go another story in, where it's one story now, I haven't seen any plans. So I'm not sure, I, I could say it's, it's an absolute no, you can't, I don't agree with it, frankly. I don't, I'm not sure if I disagree or agree with it, but I...
Well, I'd like to actually see it before.
The absolute, I can't use that word.
At this point, we have to do the recommendation, like we're going to do one tonight, because the 30 days will be up by the next time the ZBA meets.
And you do a kind of a recommendation that...
Joan, what information was referred by the ZBA? Do you have it? Did the ZBA submit plans, provide plans to the planning board?
No, I'm the, I received from the ZBA.
There were no plans?
We've seen all the schedules?
Simply paper.
Yes, that is all we got.
Well, can we say that we don't have enough information?
Because he, there was a height, there was a height restriction that he was coming in on last time also, wasn't there?
Yeah, he was going higher.
Do you know what that is? Is he keeping that?
It's an normal 35.
Can we say that we don't have enough information to...
We certainly can, yeah, we certainly can.
That we have not seen sufficient information to allow...
I would, I would like to know that.
I think you want to get the answer.
If we, yeah, if there's, and see if there is anything in there that... I think part of my problem is if indeed we're going to sort of go to that level of variance, the town's just got to change the zoning law.
It's a change in the...
Well, we certainly could ask to see some renderings of what it's going to look like, can't we?
That's the other thing. The thing, it's just, variance of, basically, this is a variance of about 110 percent greater than allowed by the law, and just the magnitude of it in and of itself.
110, more than that. More than 150, more than 150, over and above, 20, from 2,300 to 5,800?
Okay, or 150 percent, it just...
Going up 3,500 square feet.
I just, it's going to be very difficult, it seems to me, if you grant that sort of an area variance, to turn down any other area variance likely to come before you. But, and they do set precedent, when you make a decision, it does set precedent.
I think we could certainly say we don't have enough information.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable approach, we do not have, I, I can't say anything here.
But I also think you could, in commenting back to the zoning board, cite these concerns, that, you know, the, you know, that while you may not be opposed to any increase in size in the house, you're concerned about the percentage of increase and all of those...
Big application.
That's it. Okay, I think maybe, you know, I'm certainly comfortable with us saying we don't have sufficient information, because we don't. We have no idea what it looks like.
And then maybe you want to be specific about what you'd like to see, in terms of information you'd need before you feel you could comment.
You need a site plan, and you need a building elevations.
Right.
Minimum.
And I truly understand your, your concerns, I do.
And I understand both sides.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're not going to enforce this sort of thing, take it off the books. I mean, we keep bumping into this sort of thing, if you're not going to enforce it, take it off the books. You know, why do you...
Well, has there a precedent ever been set here, going above, going above and beyond what?
Well, the only time I remember is Eric Roberts, when he built something in Rhine Cliff that violated, I guess, the zoning code at the time, and they made him tear it down.
Yeah, well, George Roberts' brother there, yeah.
So, yeah, so, I mean, it has happened.
Sure.
But why do you have a 2,300 square foot maximum if you really don't mean to enforce it? What's the point? You know, and maybe there's not a point, but then take it out, take it out of the law.
Yeah.
So you're, you're saying to the ZBA that, just put it differently, that the submission of a site plan and building, building elevations are required before the planning board can be expected to issue any kind of informed comment on this, this application?
Although, and secondly, the chairman, from a procedural standpoint, just has a great deal of a problem, potentially granting a 150 percent, whatever it is, increase in area, an area variance that's not de minimis by any stretch of anyone's imagination. And that's basically more from a procedural, from a future standpoint, precedent-setting standpoint.
Well, and, you know, I'm recalling the, the application that we got from, you know, Steve Mensch for his property, property that was on the river, and he did a really good job of giving us, you know...
Oh, yeah.
Photos of what it was going to look like, and, and I think that sort of presentation's warranted here.
Certainly, certainly, but Mark just gave us for this Ford dealership, the same sort of thing. I mean, usually we do get really, you know, what Jonathan just did for Grassmere.
Well, let's, let's, let's turn it around a little bit. If the ZBA accepts that application with no renderings and stuff, that's part of the problem.
Yeah, oh, I agree.
Of course.
And I, and I'll also mention, if the ZBA grants the variance, then it has to come to the planning board for special use permit and site plan, and if we look at it and we don't like it, we are under no obligation whatsoever to approve it. So, you know, we do get that shot.
Yeah, but we don't want to, we don't want to drag the applicant through...
It's in their best interest to do it now.
Through the mud for no reason.
Yeah, oh, I agree, I agree.
No, it's in their best interest to do it now.
And that's what they're doing, because, yeah, that's what they're doing.
What's the, the size of the lot, like one, almost two acres?
Yeah, I thought it was almost two acres.
It's a, it's one of the bigger lots and...
It is one of the bigger lots, but once...
Probably the biggest in Rhine Cliff.
It may well be.
Yeah, it's like eight lots, right? In the hamlet.
It's about the size of Rhine Cliff, right?
But the problem there is that, of course, the law doesn't take that into account, the size of the law.
Yeah, like, I don't...
I mean, that's my biggest concern, is precedent. I mean, maybe...
They, they argue that, that it's under one of the larger lots in Rhine Cliff, that's a, it's a mitigating factor.
And I'm sure they will, but does it admit to 150 percent increase, or whatever that is? That's the problem. That's the problem I have, and maybe it's, you know...
Well, the other thing, too, is how, how realistic is 2,300 square feet maximum on a two acre lot, in grand scheme of things? It's really unrealistic. My house is 2,000 plus square feet, and it's a small house.
No, I, I, that's a good point as well. Problem is, why is it in, let's get it out of the law.
No.
Well, that's not the discussion tonight.
That's not the discussion tonight, no. I think what we're basically saying is we don't have sufficient information to make a reasonable recommendation.
I think our verbiage was correct, I would concur with that as a response.